I'd like to call a meeting to order and start with our land acknowledgement. As we gathered this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Could you please stand and remove your hats if possible for a moment of silence and the National Anthem?
Ms. Dombrowski, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning. Councillor Bennett. Councillor Burrows.
Present.
Councillor Doncaster. Councillor Donahue.
Here.
Warden Emo.
Present.
Councillor Giardini.
Present.
Councillor Grills.
Present.
Councillor Yon.
Present.
Councillor Lynch.
Here.
Councillor Mackenzie.
Present.
Councillor Mayville.
Present.
Councillor Murphy.
Here.
Councillor Nicholson.
Present.
Councillor Service.
Here.
Councillor Watt.
Present.
Councillor Weir.
Here.
Councillor Wilmer.
Here.
Thank you, Chair, we have quorum.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Could I have a mover and seconder for the adoption of the minutes of March 27, 2024? Member from Killaloo Haggerty Richards, member from Bonshire Valley. Discussion? Member from Abbotson Bromley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I had been scrolling through the page. Right at the very end, it was near to the adjournment, it might have been the confirmatory bylaw, and the standing kind of template is that the notwithstanding how it is done in meetings, in the minutes, it is the councillor is identified, and you will note in one of the second or third last resolutions, it identifies councillor Deep River as opposed to councillor Doncaster, just a slight clerical, just for the public record.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? So with that, all those in favor with the notations that were brought forward? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you, council. Members of county council, during the month of April, I attended 20 meetings on county business. On April 12, I met with MPP John Yakubuski to discuss the following: Queens Park Day, the Mesa funding for the Carrefour project, Ministry of Transportation following up on the Roma delegation on the Highway 17 brief, childcare with Seawell issues, housing, funding and accessibility, modular project, housing stock revitalization. We also spoke about Renfrew, our Enterprise Renfrew County and Renfrew County District Health Unit. The first-ever Renfrew County Housing Summit was held on April 8 at the MyFM Centre in Renfrew. By all accounts, it was very successful, with over 110 attendees representing various segments of the housing spectrum. Later in today's meeting, we will hear more about the summit, including a wrap-up video. A full summation report will be forthcoming in the months to follow, including action items and a discussion about tangible targets. A huge thank you to all involved. The federal government released their budget documents on April 16. While the recently announced provincial budget had more direct implications to municipal operations, there were several items within the federal budget that focused on solving the housing and homelessness crisis, including funding investments in infrastructure. I remain hopeful that the County of Renfrew will be eligible to secure funding through the funding allocations and applications when programs get rolled out, including the $6 billion Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund, and ask that we continue to work with partners like FCM to ensure that we are not forgotten. Monday, April 22, was Earth Day, which raises awareness of the need to protect the earth's natural resources for future generations and honors the achievements of the environmental movement. It is a day to remind us of our responsibility to protect our county and the planet. This year, citizens are encouraged to adopt new sustainable modes of transportation. It is beneficial to our health and the planet's health. On April 17, the CAO and I met with the Renfrew County District School Board to discuss items of mutual benefit, and attendance were the new Director of Education, Christine Neamy, who was joined by trustee Susan Humphries and Meredith Kaplan-Jamison, the Executive Officer of Public Affairs. The meeting identified several initiatives that the county and the school board could collaborate on in the future. This upcoming Friday, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus is being presented with a business plan for the Eastern Ontario Regional Housing Project. We have been talking about the 7-in-7-plus project for several months, and we will now have a clear path forward on how this initiative will roll out in the future. Thank you to ERN for all of the hard work put into this major milestone in the evolution of the strategy to grow our rental housing stock. On behalf of council, I wish to express our sincere condolences to councillor Lynch and his family on the passing of his mother Doris, who passed away on April 3 at 102 years young, and also to councillor Burrows and his family on the passing of his sister Elizabeth Hinson, who passed away on April 18. Elizabeth was part of the Ontario Works team for many years and was instrumental in training some of our current staff members. Today is Administrative Professionals' Day, and I would like to extend my deepest appreciation to all of our dedicated administrative professionals who play such a vital role in keeping our county running smoothly. Your hard work and commitment contribute significantly to our success, and we are grateful for your support. Together, we make a great team, and I'm honored to work alongside such talented individuals. I will remind those assembled here of the following: The County of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. And now we'll move to delegations. And with that, I believe, Mr. Davis, you'll introduce our delegation, please?
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, everyone. So today, our first delegation is Ms. Anne Paul, spokesman for the Kitchi Sippi Ottawa Valley Chapter for the Council of Canadians, and today she will be speaking on the climate action petition in recognition of International Earth Day. So I'll ask her to come forward and come to the podium, please.
That one. Okay, thank you. There are actually three of us who are sharing the presentation, so I'm going to hand it over to Judy to begin.
Good morning, everyone. I'm not Anne Paul. We're pleased to be here and appreciate the opportunity to present to you what we feel is critical information about the current climate crisis. We're members of the Kitchi Sippi Ottawa Valley Chapter of the Council of Canadians. As you probably know, Kitchi Sippi means Great River in Algonquin, and that refers to the Ottawa River. So I'm Judy Solve from North Algonquin Wilberforce, although I live very close to Eganville, so I kind of feel like I have a foot in both communities, and we did previously live in Bonshire Valley, so I can kind of confidently represent both, I think. And with me is Anne Paul from Killaloo Haggerty and Richards and Carol Sulfer from Renfrew. And in the gallery today are other members of our chapter, and they're from other municipalities throughout Renfrew County, and other supporters as well, so we're really representing the county here today. So who are we? What do I hit here?
Question.
So we're concerned citizens of Renfrew County, as I mentioned, and we're spread throughout that. We're parents, grandparents, youth as well. We're grandparents, so we have youth in our lives. We're members of the Council of Canadians, which is a national, oops, national nonprofit organization. It's volunteer-based, and it was formed in, our chapter of, or council of Canadians, sorry, has existed for many years, but our chapter was formed in 2021. And we're also voters who are very concerned about the climate change situation.
Okay, why do we care about climate change? Some of what we've seen with the changing climate here in the valley is extreme weather, such as floods, drought, uncommonly high winds. I don't know who got woken up besides me last night with the wind. Directo, microbursts, and whiplash temperature changes, such as we've seen the last month and a half here, hard on everything, including apparently it's taking out our Canada Jays as well, according to a recent Gazette article. Wildfires, lots of smoke, endangerment and extinction of wildlife and plants, insecurity of water and food are obviously likely consequences of the droughts and other dangers to human health, and harm to our local economy. In an article by Robert Fisher called "The Withering of Winter," which was published in the Valley Gazette last month, our MPP, John Yakubuski, described very well how this one aspect of climate change has hit hard on the winter economy that's so vital to many local communities. Excuse me, I actually have the article here, which, and he said that this winter was the worst in his memory for snow and ice accumulation, and the impact of that lack of snow and ice on local ecotourism and other businesses, this is a quote, "cannot be overstated." He's quoted as saying in this article, "Discussions will need to happen between local groups and Queens Park." So we're hoping that's something that county council is interested in. Increased cost of living and insurance is also an aspect. I imagine everybody's gotten the increased insurance bills, and it's getting more difficult to obtain insurance in some areas. There are also both personal and public repair costs that add to the taxpayer budget as well as our own personal pockets. While things do seem gloom and doom sometimes, hope is out there. We see many groups, businesses, and individuals are working hard to combat fossil fuel emissions. There's research being done to develop renewable energy sources and to address complications that we know we're going to face in the coming decades. We, as a chapter, decided in the fall of 2022 that it was time to do something here in the Upper Ottawa Valley. So in the first few months, we put together our Climate Matters Action Group. And we're just kind of waiting for the slide to come up there. We'll have to go forward, shall we, to slide? It's still on, oh, it's still on the other one. Okay, well, the people in the observer seats can see, and the rest of you are just going to have to listen to me. Yeah, if you can. Oh, it's up. There we go. One more. Okay, so what have we done in the last 18 months since we decided that we would take on the climate action? We have sponsored fact-based webinars about climate issues and solutions. They're on our website, if you're looking for a link. We've hosted climate cafes in public libraries and municipalities, and they're still ongoing, but we've done five, and I'm happy to say a couple of mayors have attended some of them. We've hosted information tables at community events like CD Sunday and other celebrations and events. We networked with other organizations concerned about climate action. We've worked collaboratively with the school boards, as well as what the Warden was saying. That's something we've been doing, and we've just started going into classes and talking with classes. We created a petition calling for local governmental climate action, and so far we have 537 signatures on the petition. It's in two formats, because we found the paper version was not easy to do, so we did an online version, but the paper version actually is preferred by many, and I'm embarrassed to say it's in my car. It's not here. I'm going to bring it in after the collection of all the names, but there's 537 of them as of 5 o'clock last night. We researched the role of rural communities regarding meaningful climate action, and we circulated our findings to Development and Property Committee at the last, in February, but I also brought a few copies of one of our synopses of, you know, how to, issues for rural communities. And we surveyed local councils on climate action success and needs, and found that 90% of the respondents to our survey are hoping for county-wide, a county-wide climate action committee that could really get things going collaboratively, involving, you know, inspiring people. Outside of the membership in county council, we've had the opportunity at one of our climate cafes to meet with Mayor Gervais and CAO Dave Unrow from Pembroke Council, and they're both very interested in collaborating with county council. They've had a climate advisory committee going for a few years, and they really feel that collaboratively, there'll be more of a mass, and it'll be easier to move forward with a lot of the things they have in mind. And we opened a conversation just recently with the Renfrew County District Health Unit about the provincially mandated Climate Change Health Vulnerability and Adaptation Assessment for the county. So that's something that's hopefully coming down the tubes soon and could be integrated into the work that county-wide, Valley-wide county umbrella county council, that the county council could get going, a committee that would bring all the partners together for work on this crucial area. We have been inspired by a variety of Canadian experts in this field, from science, education, psychology, and governmental leadership, and I would like to just highlight four areas of research. The first, from Dr. Catherine Hayhoe, a Canadian climate scientist. She is very clear on the path to finding hopeful solutions for a sustainable future. Her main point, the first and most important thing we need to do to combat climate change is to talk about it. It's time to stop the silence. It's time to talk about climate change. Secondly, we looked at research by Dr. Ellen Field and Dr. Lindsay Galway, and they are educators who work, who are professors at Lakehead University. They conducted a survey of youth across Canada about their feelings with climate change, and it is frightening. In 2023, they released their information. Our youth are aware of climate problems, but they feel very distressed about the inaction of adults, and it is resulting in youth anxiety. I don't have time to go into the statistics, but it is frightening to hear about what they feel for their future, which they have not caused. Thirdly, we looked at the research by Dr. Robert Gifford, professor, an environmental psychologist from the University of Victoria in British Columbia. His research has resulted in the identification of seven different, he calls them dragons of inaction. Why? You know, actions, we are not moving forward. Why? And he has also offered some solutions to slaying these dragons, so it's very psychologically oriented. Our fourth and final piece of research that I just want to highlight comes from Dave Giedeen and Daniel Hinstra, first from the University of Guelph and the second from the University of Waterloo. And they have released, emphasized that rural municipal governments, rural municipal governments, that's us, have an important role to play in the efforts of climate change, and they are suggesting that this should be done by harnessing local knowledge, engaging stakeholders, and leveraging a range of tools. So all of this research together has motivated us to move forward and to reach out to the citizens in Renfrew County and to you, our elected representatives, today. Okay, so what our research has shown us is that an effective rural action, climate action plan, and that would be something that could be, that'll obviously come out of the Climate Action Committee, has three components, and one of them deals with mitigation, which is the reduction of emissions and the replacement of energy sources by sustainable renewable energy. The second part is to build valley-wide resiliency for living with the ongoing new normal situation that we're in, so that until stabilization can be reached, because we're already into climate change and the climate change effects, and it's going to be a few decades, even if we stop burning fossil fuels today, it would still be a few decades at least before we could get back to the regular normal that we could anticipate from here on, rather than the constant new normal. And finally, the plan that could come out of the work of this committee would contain and promote adaptation strategies. So, for example, nature-based solutions to some of the problems that we have with flooding or droughting or some of the other things, but also, you know, we're going to need some hard engineering, and it's going to mean that, for example, when we replace a culvert now, we don't base it on what the historic need for that size of that culvert is, but we're actually using the statistics to figure out, you know, in 20 years down the road, how much water would be the maximum going down there. So adaptation strategies also apply to food security, water security, other things.
Okay, so everything points to a need for local leadership, which we're hoping is found here, and what we're looking for, or what that would mean, is communicating effectively, so inspiring and educating our communities, residents, and businesses, uniting upper Ottawa Valley local governments in a sensible, cohesive response to climate change, promoting decision-making that uses a climate lens, and that could be for existing projects and new ones coming forward. It just means to consider the ramifications of everything that's being done and sort of forecasting for the future as well, but just considering climate change for everything that's happening from here on. Supporting smaller councils in their climate change efforts, and that goes a little bit back to the survey that we did with various municipalities. We were getting an indication that because of lack of resources, and it's both, they just don't have the people in small, among their staff, and the resources to go forward to consider climate change always and to take action. So they need that leadership from the greater body here, and involving other local stakeholders to contribute their knowledge about climate issues and solutions. As Anne has been saying, you know, there are other partners out there that are quite eager to join the effort and to offer their knowledge and expertise.
You may have noticed on your way into the building this morning, a series of signs that were planted in the grass. It was so cold, you may not have taken the time to read those signs, and since we were not allowed to bring them into the room today, I would just like to take a moment to read the titles. These signs were prepared by high school students, in addition to adults within Renfrew County, and I believe they are representative of the 500-plus signatures.
and, and new ones coming forward. It just means to consider the ramifications of, of everything that's being done, uh, and sort of forecasting for the future as well, but just considering climate change for everything that's happening from here on. Supporting smaller councils in their climate change efforts. Uh, and that goes a little bit back to the survey that we, we did with various municipalities. Uh, we were getting an indication that because of lack of resources, and it's both, they just don't have the people in small, uh, among their staff, uh, and the resources to go forward, uh, to consider, uh, climate change always and to take actions. So they need that leadership, uh, from the greater body here. Um, and involving other local stakeholders to contribute their knowledge about climate issues and solutions. As Ann has been saying, um, you know, there are other partners out there that are quite eager to, to join the effort and to offer their knowledge and expertise.
You may have noticed on your way into the building this morning, a series of signs that were planted in the grass. Um, you, it was so cold, you may not have taken the time to read those signs. And since we were not allowed to bring them into the, uh, room today, I would just like to take a moment to read the titles. These signs were prepared by high school students, in addition to adults within Renfrew County. And I believe they are representative of the 500-plus signatures that we have brought forward, asking for a climate action committee in Renfrew County. So they are, Renfrew County Council, lead us in change. Climate change is hurting our economy. You are our elected leaders. Be our climate leaders. Renfrew County, small councils need help. Leadership means inspire people, empower people, lead, change, share vision. And, hopefully, the last one's there. It didn't move, eh? It didn't move? Okay. This is, roll up your climate action sleeves. This one says, our response so far. Uh, this one, there was a forest fire going with a man standing there, it could have been a woman too, standing there with a watering can, suggesting that maybe our efforts could be a little stronger. Climate crisis is real. End climate silence. Let's face climate change together. Inspire us to change our practices. And form a climate action committee. And I feel the most poignant sign of all says, think of our grandchildren.
So we feel it's time for action. Uh, we respectfully request that the council, this county council, support the case that we've been making during this presentation. Uh, climate action is an urgent issue. It's now a climate crisis, and I don't think anybody can dispute that. Uh, it's important for the well-being of all in the Upper Ottawa Valley. So we ask County Council to make a motion this very morning to get a valley-wide climate action committee underway. That's our request to you today. And we're prepared to assist you, uh, however staff might find that helpful. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present this request.
Okay, and we're now available for questions. Um, anybody want to know anything more about what we're here for? Because I think we made it pretty clear, we'd hoping that there'll be a motion now from, from the floor, um, to, uh, to, um, you know, get us started. And we've had some thoughts about how that might work.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And, uh, is there any questions, comments, concerns from members of council? Uh, I see the member from Killalhagdy Richards and then Abbotson Bromley.
Thank you, Chair. First off, I'd like to applaud you and your group for the initiatives that you have taken, that have achieved to this point. Uh, just a plug for KHR. Our fifth annual Environmental Action Tour takes place on May 4th from 8 to 1. And a little history, we have hundreds of volunteers that have come together over the years to help pick over 500 bags of garbage and recycling, hundreds of pounds of scrap metal from our roadways, ditches, and fields, cleaning up our community and our environment. I know you are specific as far as what you're asking, but is there anything else that you need from County Council for us to go forward?
Well, I want to say that I've been part of the cleanup crew. I live in Killalhagdy, and I'm really, thank you for your kind words today, uh, Mayor Mayville. Um, is, I do have a, a proposal for a motion, but I'm wondering if there's other comments first?
Uh, the member from Abbotson Bromley?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Thank you through you, um, to the presenters this morning, the delegation, uh, this morning. Uh, I am, the question I think is probably for Mr. Davis, perhaps Mr. Kelly. Uh, the county has engaged, uh, an outside consultant, uh, that is, it is anticipated in this calendar year is going to be delivering a report. I'm anticipating that this will be a very comprehensive report, uh, with a view towards analyzing whatever the various steps that could be taken now, uh, midterm, longer term, what the constraints are, the impediments, the barriers are, et cetera. Uh, that actually, uh, was a direct result of the strategic planning exercise that was undertaken in, uh, early 2023, I believe. I wonder if you could speak to when we anticipate that report coming to County Council?
Mr. Davis?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Warden, and through you. So, um, just a reminder that we did hire a company called Ainsworth Consulting Company to review our, um, our information, our greenhouse gas emission information from our, our vehicles, our buildings, um, and our, and what the next steps would be if we need to, um, implement a green, a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. So the, um, the intent for the, the final result will be later on in the fall, but we have a midterm report planned for June of this year. Um, it's interesting to note, though, um, we thought we had a lot, a lot of information for our fleets, um, the, the gas consumptions. And with this exercise, we're realizing we don't have the information yet. And that we're, it's, it's a good thing, really, because if what we don't know, we don't know, we can make a correction and fix this. So, um, hopefully that answers your question, councillor.
I, I can, um...
I'm, I'm sorry, just, um, Abbotson Bromley, please?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and through you, thank you to Mr. Davis, uh, for that, and I very much look forward to that. It has been somewhat of an odyssey, the first time that we went out, this, actually, the, the genesis of this goes back to 2017. At that time, uh, the challenge was in actually sourcing consulting agencies that could deliver. The reason I asked for that is because the county has undertaken a cogent, uh, and systemic approach to this. When we were discussing this and the engagement of the consultant, uh, we were certainly very much cognizant of not just the lower tier, but the general public as well, business and individuals within our community. The anticipation is that this is, if, if this is not to be the blueprint of what others might use, it's going to be the foundation. So I'm very much, uh, engaged in that process, uh, very much not in favor at this time, at this time. It seems that this is going to be premature, uh, the, uh, this valley-wide climate action. For the very, I think that Mr. Davis inadvertently provided, one of the, the factors for that is we are finding that in fact, our own data has not been sufficient to begin to analyze what our steps are going to be if we cannot identify the specific issues. So from my perspective, right when we engaged this outside consultant, it was with a view towards this is going to begin the process of how we can inform everyone in this room, keeping in mind that everyone in this room does go back to the lower-tier municipalities. That is the conduit through which this works. So I'm not opposed, uh, in the future, this I believe will be appropriate. It is premature, in my estimation at this point, Mr. Warden, uh, to put this together until such time as, as we have received a report on our own, uh, operations and initiatives here.
Thank you. And Ms. Paul?
Yeah, um, I... We recognize and we are very grateful that, um, Renfrew County Council has initiated a climate action process that relates to mitigation. In the meantime, we and every other resident in this community and every business and every industry is dealing with resiliency and adaptation issues, which are, to my understanding, not in the contract that's been made with the, with the, um, with the consultant. Right now, the consultant's contract deals with data collection for, um, the dealing with mitigation of, um, the emissions of the, of the organization or the operation of Renfrew County Council. We're talking about the things that we live with every day. We're talking about, um, you know, the, the effect of the withering of winter on our communities and what kinds of steps might be taken. For example, when MPP John Yakubuski talks about, um, you know, there need to be meetings between local groups and the province, there's an opportunity there. Um, there's research that's been collected by, um, already and, and some things that have been tried with the city of Pembroke, the sister city, um, that, that could be useful. Um, so it's really apples and oranges, what the, what the, um, because I was here for the presentation that he made, um, is apples and oranges what we're talking about? Or it may be, is apples and fruit salad? And it's not like it's premature. It's like it's overdue to deal with climate action as a whole, as a, as a, as a body. So the recommendation, the proposal, if you want to share them around?
May I just make one?
Yeah, you can.
Just one thing.
Yeah.
There is a lot of work that can be done in Renfrew County that doesn't require data to get going. Our residents are looking for direction, education, and inspiration. And I think that a grassroots committee led by Renfrew County Council can provide that.
Thank you. And I, sorry, I see the member from McNabbure Side and then Petawawa.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and, um, thank you very much, um, to the Council of Canadians for this presentation. Um, I've got a few comments. Um, so we, we do have it as one of our strategic plan priorities for climate change. I, I do believe that it's on everybody's mind on, on a regular basis, and we're constantly looking for the best way forward. As, as my colleague from Abbotson Bromley mentioned, um, we, we've taken some action and made some investment into the, the, our own footprint, um, as the corporation of, of the county of Renfrew. But seeing it's such a, um, large issue, and, um, and Council of Canadians, as, as the county, um, Renfrew County Council, are constantly working on what we can do to leave a, a better society for future generations, I, I believe that's, um, clear in both cases. Um, I, I think what, um, what, what I'm hearing from the Council of Canadians is it's far more than just, they're, they're here for, for reasons, it's far more than just the, the actual footprint of the corporation of the, of the county of Renfrew, that they're looking for, um, that this county takes some leadership to, um, coordinate, um, conversations amongst all groups that aren't necessarily, um, part of the, the governance of the, of the county, but, um, local grassroots efforts, um, agriculture, I'm sure, the, the food that we eat, um, and, and local businesses, um, can, can they be organized in some way so that they can act in some way? And we don't know what that is, that, that there's many possibilities, but can we organize, um, local businesses to act, um, churches, you know, and, and all, all kinds of, um, groups and individual citizens? And so I think that's, what, what they're asking for is more of an umbrella committee that would, would certainly, um, take note of, of what our specific footprint is at the county, and, and, uh, we're waiting for that data for that, but to get going on coordinating any other initiative. So I, I would support forming that committee. I have a number of procedural questions. Um, we, we do have other models where we've got committees that involve county councillors, um, special interest groups, and, and general members of the public. If we, if we did form this sort of committee, would it have to go through the striking committee, for example, is my question, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, it would, and we'd also have to, to approve the terms of reference as well, which would outline the, uh, which would outline the membership. So I think, you know, I think we're accepting of the idea that there is a committee necessary at some point. Uh, I think what we're cautious about is, is rushing out, forming a committee, and then not having, uh, not having a solid footing in going forward, because I think it would be, I think one of the things we don't want to do is embarrass the, uh, the community or the chambers by rushing out, saying something and finding out that we're lacking in, in action, but of a lot of words. And so I, you know, I, I would suggest that's probably the, uh, the reason for us being as cautious as, as we are with it. And so, um, your hand is down, were you completed, Mr., uh, McNabbure Side?
Um, for now, I guess. I'm just waiting to see if there's other comments, but, uh, from, from any other of my colleagues?
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, Petawawa, please, and then Ms. Paul?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Uh, thank you for coming here and, uh, giving this presentation. Uh, the three of you are very well-spoken and, and well-informed, and thanks to your group as well for braving the cold outside and sending your message in the way of song. It's not often we're serenaded as we come into work here at the county every month. So that, that was very nice. Uh, and you're right, it needs to be talked about. And you being here today and talking about it keeps it at the forefront and present in everybody's minds. But I'd just like to let you know that, uh, the lower-tier municipalities are doing what we can. We recognize that it's real and we recognize that it's here, and we are taking steps to mitigate climate change as best we can. So just to give you some examples, there are ways we can do it that are affordable and, and cost-effective. Simple things like paving shoulders of roads or providing multi-use pathways or trail systems to get our citizens out of their cars and onto bicycles and scooters and e-bikes or whatever, to help mitigate climate change, changing light bulbs to LED on streetlights and in the buildings. Those are cost-effective measures, uh, in mitigating climate change. However, having said that, a lot of the other measures are expensive and sometimes out of the reach of small municipalities. And that's where groups like you and other groups can advocate on our behalf to the provincial or federal governments to say to them, these smaller-tier municipalities need your funding. We need programs, we need help to implement all of these changes that need to be made. So on our behalf, you can do that for us. So just to give you an example, at the wastewater treatment plant in Petawawa, we just completed an $8 million project. And that's a lot of money to put on the backs of our taxpayers. We were fortunate to get some government funding to help us with the process, but we are now going to be able to turn our waste into renewable natural gas, which will then power a combined heat and power plant, and that will provide all of the utility and electricity we need for that plant. But it wasn't cheap. And there, there are other projects that smaller-tier municipalities could do like that, but again, we need the help from the provincial and federal governments in, in terms of fundings and other initiatives. We just purchased our first electric car, and we're purchasing our first electric pickup truck, but then to put in the charging stations, it costs a lot of money. Fortunately, we got a little bit of funding to do that, but more needs to be offered from those upper-level governments for us to implement all these changes. We looked at buying an electric Zamboni. It was double the cost, but we said in the end, let's go ahead and do it. But to retrofit our arena to allow that electric Zamboni to be there was out of our reach, budgetary reach. So again, if there were programs or funding or initiatives from the higher levels of government, we could do more. So, so thanks again for being here. Thanks for keeping the conversation going. And I just want to let you know that we are doing everything we can at, at the lower tier, within our means.
Thank you. And Ms. Paul, if I could just get you to wrap it up, please?
Yeah, um, I want to touch on two points that you just made. One is, um, advocacy, and the other is money. Um, when we appeared before Development and Peace, uh, Development and Property, sorry, Committee, that was a bit of a slip, going back a few decades. Um, sorry, Development and Property Committee in February, um, we, um, uh, we, the, the warden raised the issue of funding for a committee, because we talked about the committee then. And we undertook to do fund, uh, research into what funding is available to help a committee get going for the coordination. And we've started that. And, um, uh, we're also frankly enthusiastic about MPP Yakubuski's comment that maybe Queens Park is going to be interested in helping us out too. So, but there's other, you know, higher levels of government. When we did the, the municipal survey, um, we... When we did the municipal survey, we found that most of the smaller municipalities were saying exactly what you're saying, we can do some things, we're doing some things, but to do some of the bigger things, we really need help from the higher levels of government, and advocacy would be useful. So we came back to, because we'd made the commitment to help look for funding, we came back to staff and said, you know, is there a possibility that we could meet and discuss, like, what we're looking for funding for? Because it's hard to advocate unless you know what you're doing. And then we ended up here, because there isn't, there wasn't a clear political mandate to staff to work, continue to work with us on that. So what we would like to propose is an investigation into this whole question, in the sense that I know that we tried to pass around a proposed resolution, and that was not acceptable for the, for the, for the council here or the protocols. But basically, what we would like is a motion, if possible, for the CAO to authorize up to 15 hours of staff time in the next, in the next month before the next council meeting, because this is an urgent issue, just to talk about what might be a startup plan for implementation of the proposed collaborative Umbrella Valley Climate Action Committee. And we're prepared, when there is that plan available, we're prepared to assist the staff with what we've done in terms of research and that sort of thing. And when, when, when that, that report comes back to council, if council decides to go ahead with it, we're prepared to be involved directly in fundraising for that thing that we think of as a strategic visioning session. So it doesn't commit to setting up the committee, it commits to looking at the idea of setting up the committee, dedicating a little bit of staff time over the next five weeks before the next, before the next county council meeting, to the idea of, and then it would go to, into the kinds of things that the warden has been talking about with the striking of the committee and, you know, but that's down the road. First, we need, there needs to be, the partners need to come together to strategize in a visioning kind of way, and that means bringing in a consultant, which we commit to help with finding the funding for, to, so that's, that's what we'd like to see, because we have spent 18 months doing nothing but this, basically, and we know that the grassroots people in Renfrew County in all your communities support us. We've seen it in the libraries, we've seen it in the school system, we've seen it in, you know, this signing on our petitions at events, you know, participation in our webinars. So we're speaking not just for us, when you say the Council of Canadians, but we're speaking actually for the people and the small businesses in this community who are really concerned about the ongoing situation. And that's, well, we really came here hoping you guys would step forward and inspire the rest, the grassroots people of this community, of this whole county, this Upper Ottawa Valley, with, you know, passing a motion that agrees to spend a little bit of staff time looking at how there might be a strategic visioning session pending council's approval, and us finding funding for it, together with council, on this, on this idea of getting a climate action committee going. And I've seen your list of committees, and obviously it's going to end up being an ad hoc committee, like a lot of the others, but I mean, hopefully, we don't need it forever either. Hopefully, we can start getting some work done. That's what we're here to beg for.
Okay, and then, thank you. So we will, with a quick conversation with Mr. Kelly, we will dedicate some, some time to this, with the understanding that it likely won't get back into here until the end of June, because it's just with workload, it's going to take some time to, to fit it in. So we, you know, Mr. Kelly has agreed to do that.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will bring the petitions.
Great, thank you.
Give them to whoever I can reach closest over there, or maybe I'll just leave them at the desk. They must be in my car. Yeah, I'll leave them at reception. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, the member from Eganville, if you, or sorry, from Buncher Valley.
Oh.
If you could introduce our next delegation, please.
Thank you, Warden. Now I'm just representing the village, I guess. It is my pleasure as, oh, look, they're, they're just going up without even being introduced, look at that, as the new Chair of the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, don't know how that happened, to introduce, I'm going to introduce Lisa first, because she's standing there, Lisa Severson, who is our Director of Communications, and Jason Saint Pierre, who is our Chief Executive Officer. Oh, and thank you, guys, this got me out of doing an EORN report for today's county council meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us. It's our annual update to county council on the EORN cell gap project. So I also have to do the, oh, okay. So we're just going to jump in here. So some of the information that we'll be providing today, you have seen in the past, it's just a friendly reminder of some of what our goals are for the project. So again, we hope and we will achieve 99% coverage in eastern Ontario, where people live, work, and travel on major roadways, and you'll be able to make that cell call when you need, use your cellphone to make a call when you need to. 95% of the region where people live, work, and travel on major roadways will be able to use their devices to look at email, surf the web, do banking, et cetera. And for 85% of the region where people live, work, and travel on major roadways, high def service will be available. So if you had to stream, for the, for example, this morning on my way up, we had a call that we use Zoom for. So I was able to connect my phone and do a Zoom call while I was driving, hands-free, of course, but that's, that's a capability, as well as your Public Works or your EMS services being able to connect in and live stream if it's required. Okay, that's, so a little bit about the financial funding details. The provincial and federal government have each provided up to $71 million towards the project. The EOWC and nine of the 10 EOMC members have jointly contributed a little over $10 million, and our partner Rogers in the project has, needs to invest at least $150 million into the project, so it will be worth over $300 million once the, once the project is completed. And for Renfrew County, there's approximately $50 million worth of infrastructure being brought into the county. So a little bit about construction, and I know we've seen this before, it takes 12 to 24 months to get us ready to go to construction, so that's the first five blocks in, in the chart. So the first is a property needs to be found with a willing private landowner, a lease has to be negotiated, and that's done through the Rogers staff. They go out, they have specialized people who do that work. Once that lease is negotiated, archaeological assessments and natural heritage assessments with our First Nation communities are completed. Then it goes to the local municipality for land use authority, and so we thank everybody that has worked hard to help us move the project forward. And once we have the land use authority and we've received the reports back from the provincial government around archaeological assessment, and the First Nations have agreed that we can move forward with construction, the province and Rogers are then notified, and then site preparation, ordering of supplies, et cetera, begins. The last box where you see the cell tower, actual, the actual build can take anywhere from three to nine months, and some of the things that can drag that process out, if you, if you want to say it that way, is supply chain shortages and/or utility hookups. So all of these sites have to have power, and so you need the ability to coordinate with the utility provider to ensure that we can get those done, and sometimes there's delays. So a little bit more about duty to consult. So we are working with 18 indigenous communities and organizations. We were designated that responsibility by the Province of Ontario and Canada to have meaningful consultations, so we will be doing consultation with those 18 groups throughout the process of the builds. EORN, like we know Renfrew County, we're dedicated to working closely with the indigenous communities, and to date, we have 178 of the proposed new tower sites, they have gone through natural heritage assessment and archaeological assessments. We've had over 160 meetings with the various groups that we work with, and we have two consultation agreements with two of the First Nations. So this is usually the slides that people are most interested in, so this is what our project looks like today. So as you can see on the map, there are 312 uplifts, we, that's what Rogers refers to them, but it's upgrades. So if there were existing towers in the region, those towers were upgraded with 5G equipment. So they've been upgraded, so 307 of those towers have been completed of the 312. We have 257 new tower sites to be built across the region, 29 of those are complete, but our fiscal year end is the end of March, and many more are coming online. So these numbers fluctuate, this information is from March, because we receive information on a monthly basis from Rogers. And we have 75 co-locations, so a co-location is Rogers leases space on a third-party organization or one of their competitor's towers. And so there are 75 of those types of, of those types of builds happening in the region, and 47 right now are complete. So we're going to look at Renfrew County now. So in Renfrew County, there are 25 proposed uplifts or upgrades to existing towers, all 25 of those are now in service. There are 47 new builds within Renfrew County, four are done, but as I said, there's, there's an announcement we're hoping that will be done in May to advise of the new builds that have happened over the last few months. And there are, actually, this map, these numbers are incorrect, as you'll see from the charts provided, there are actually 10 co-locations in Renfrew County, and seven of them have been completed. So we've provided the information on charts around upgrades or uplifts, as well as co-locations, and new tower builds, and it's quite a bit of information, and you can review that at your leisure. We're happy to answer questions, but there's quite a few towers, new tower builds that will be happening in 2025 and 2026. So the next steps for us, as, as far as EORN goes, is, sorry, I'm just going to flip to my own. The upgrades to existing towers, we hope will be completed by this year, we're pushing Rogers to see if that can happen. Land use authority process, we're also hoping that wraps up by the end of this year. We need those, those completed to be able to allow us to move forward with the builds, and we're running on a very tight timeline now to get, to get everything constructed. As I said before, our consultation process with our First Nation communities and indigenous organizations, that will go until 2026, and new tower construction will be completed by 2026, and we'll be having, hopefully, more in-person events around announcements, and we hope one of those can be held in Renfrew County in the future. And I'm going to turn it over now to Jason, and he will complete the rest of the presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Lisa. I'm knocking everything apart here, so. But on top of the 600 towers and sites that we're working on for the upgrades, we've had a few other initiatives that we've been working on through the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, just to bring the county council up to speed on. So recently, actually, the last couple of weeks, we've just handed in the Seven and Seven Business Plan for the regional housing initiative, which we were asked to, to study and create a business plan on the viability of moving forward with that plan. And it was a rather lengthy document that we are sharing with the EOWC Friday, this Friday, to go through with them, but it was about an eight-month effort required to collect the data and put that plan together on that. So more to come on that, but that was a large undertaking taken on by the team. Recently, we've also started to look at the digital permitting and opportunities in that, where there is opportunity through a digital, sorry, for Permit Central, through the municipalities, through the Accelerated High Speed Program, which is the acronym for ACIP, if you've heard that, fiber to the home in a lot of our rural areas, looking to support the municipalities on the permitting requirements, as well as the opportunity to recover some causal costs through these programs. So we've set up a program that we are slowly rolling out and introducing throughout local municipalities throughout eastern Ontario to help support some of those challenges. And finally, we've, we've been working on our strategic plan, so the end of our strategic plan cycle has come due, and we are in the midst of working on the next five-year plan on that. One of the, oops, sorry, I guess I should have hit that first, eh? Where does that go? So one of the items that we've been looking at through the strategic plan has been around the communal servicing projects. Just for those who may not be familiar, and I believe Frontenac County may have come and done a presentation to county council around communal services, so nothing we're talking about here today should be, is new. Frontenac County has done a great job on this initiative and leading the way in looking at ways to introduce rural development and being able to service those areas through, through drinking and sewage systems. So there, these are decentralized systems that would allow for rural growth or non-urban growth, but also at the same time be able to support communities that may be having challenges on overloaded systems, et cetera. They are referred to as decentralized or clustered systems, and they are very similar to the municipal systems that you put in today, except they are a single central facility that is placed in the field. There are a number of them already working throughout eastern Ontario, I think it's about 18 of them, that are not under municipal control. Typically, they are introduced through private development and managed by those developers. The model that Frontenac has put in place is the creation of the municipal corporation, which is something that we are looking at and studying, to see if there's opportunities to look at regional opportunities. So why communal services? So when you're looking at this, what are the opportunities here? The communal services really unlocks the rural land development, that traditional infrastructure is just too costly or not reasonable to get to. So you look at a traditional water, wastewater system and the cost to implement that, a number of our rural communities will not be able to afford those ever, and this is an alternative to that. It reduces the costs and the wait times associated with traditional infrastructure, it increases the density and efficiency where that meets the OPs and the official plans and the local community requirements, and it increases the opportunity for mixed, mixed use development. It's not a new technology, it has been around a number of years and has been adopted throughout the world, especially along the eastern seaboard of the United States, we've seen a number of usage for this, so it is a proven technology out there. In February 2024, the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, with our partner 2B Developments, were able to secure $1 million in funding to support the localization and the study of communal servicing. The plan for this is not to reinvent the wheel, we will be leveraging the efforts and work that Frontenac County has put forward in looking at the standards and the creations of things like the municipal corporations and the introduction of these services. and the introduction of these services within currently unserviced lands. So with the funding, there, we really have a four-step plan that we're looking at to provide the continued support for the county of Frontenac, which did create that municipal corporation or utility and has pioneered communal servicing in Eastern Ontario. We're looking to create a step-by-step guide mirroring the Frontenac model and provide it to other municipalities. We're looking to develop and create the system standards of whichever utility, except for hydro, is required to have and to create a lead and skilled enhancement training and education program for municipal staff and operations. So really building around what Frontenac's done and how to introduce this and smooth out some of the seven years of education that they've gone through to see if we can look at developing these methods more efficiently and delivering them a little bit quicker. How can you help with the local communal servicing? So if you're interested and would like to consider the adoption of communal, which I believe is under the OP already for Frontenac County, what we're into now is we've been able to secure $1 million through a competition. There are two more phases to that competition that we are applying for. So letters of support from the county level as well as the partner municipalities would be very beneficial for us as we continue to try to proceed down this path. And the awards range between $3 to $5 million and will help us expand this opportunity of education and introduction as well as policies and standards that could be adopted throughout rural communities in Eastern Ontario. I believe that's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much. With that, any questions, comments, concerns from members of council? Member from Abbotson Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Thank you once again for the presentation on this, this project. Two kind of questions. One is directly related to this. Do we have a high confidence? Do you have a high confidence? So a year ago, when you were here, the anticipated construction completion was going to be in 2025 and now it's been pushed to 2026. Do you have a high level of confidence that that's a valid target?
We do have a high level of confidence that we'll be able to meet that targets. Last year we were here, we were going through the process of extending and a lot of that was around the requirements for the duty to consult and the learnings that took us through that process. It was about a 13-month process to get to a point where we had a consultation process that we were comfortable with and that was recognized by the province. So with that, that delayed our initial 13 months and with this 13-month extension and into 2026, we are confident we can deliver that.
Supplementary?
Supplementary, and I will certainly be much deferential to you folks. Last year, there was also a person here from Bell. There was actually much circumspection around a lot of the information, notwithstanding that just while you were making your presentation, I pulled up once again this year, as I did last year, the map provided by the province and throughout Renfrew, throughout Ontario. But as it pertains to Renfrew County, Kajiko largely had the northern area and Bell and Rogers kind of divvied up the more southern or eastern portions. And I get that this is outside of your purview. These are our initiatives that are being undertaken by those service providers. But because of EORN's involvement in the prior rollout and in the cell gap, do you have any knowledge on, on the progress that's being made on that extension into high-speed internet into Renfrew County by those large internet service providers?
Yeah, and you've actually identified exactly, that is part of that ACIP program, so that provincial high-speed program. We have not been directly involved or engaged in that. The information we have is not much greater than what you have. Our understanding though is that they're still going through a lot of permitting and we are seeing construction crews. So the target from the province has not changed from 2025 at this point and what we're hearing is that that's still the goal for those targets to be able to met. So outside of that, I'm not comfortable to answer much more on their behalf. That's the best I think I know at this point.
So through you, Mr. Chair, there will be, I think you'll see an influx of possible permitting requirements for MCs, et cetera, for your municipalities. So in 2024, 2025, so just for staff resourcing, et cetera.
Thank you. The member from McNabbry side.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, Jason and Lisa, for this presentation. Everything that EORN does directly affects our abilities to, to develop in a more modern way. So we appreciate the specialization that you take in these areas. So with respect to communal water and wastewater systems, that is coming up further in the agenda, but I'm just curious where this funding does come from.
There will be a further announcement made in the very near future. At this point, let's go where we have to leave it at right now.
If I may, Mr. Warden.
Sure.
So this, I wasn't sure how I was going to write my report on that meeting for this because I knew that that question was going to come up and I know that we had a discussion that we were announcing, but we weren't allowed to announce. So great question mark, but you'll find out later.
Yes, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. On that point, because of the federal budget, there is a blackout period for announcements. I think that is coming very close to an end. So then we'll be able to hopefully have something out within the next few weeks.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much and we are excited as I think the member from McNabbry side mentioned, it is further on in our agenda to talk about the communal systems. So we are very interested in it as a model to, to assist in developing our more rural areas. But thank you very much for everything and on behalf of the Wardens Caucus, thank you for your business plan. I spent several hours last night reading it for the third time and the slide deck, which we're going to see on Friday, so I think I can almost speak with confidence on it. So again, thank you very much. It's a lot of work, a lot of data, very valuable and we're lucky to have you as a resource. Correspondence, please.
All correspondence, all correspondence received has been forwarded to the appropriate committee, Warden.
Thank you. And Community Services, please, Chair.
Thank you, Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of county council, we, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, Mesa Stakeholder Engagement Meeting. On March 20th, 2024, a stakeholder engagement session was held at the Care Force Centre in Pembroke. Representatives from the County of Renfrew's Community Services, Development of Property and Emergency Services participated in the meeting along with local addictions and mental health service providers and they exchanged information. All stakeholders present expressed their commitment to collaboration and working together to bridge the existing service gaps. Item number two is the Food Affordability Report. It is attached as Appendix 1. For Renfrew County and District, the 2023 report was repaired, prepared by the Health Unit and gives some very staggering and sad statistics. Item number three is the 2023 Licensed Childcare Annual Report. It was released by the Early Years and Childcare Division for the Ministry of Education and it has detailed information about the childcare and early years system as well as Ontario's progress in line with its commitment to Canada. Item, information item number four is Bill C. 35, An Act Respecting Early Learning and Childcare in Canada. On December 8th, Bill C. 35 was introduced in the House of Commons with the intention of enshrining the principles of the Canada-wide early learning childcare system into federal law and received royal assent on March 19th. Item number five is the Homelessness Prevention Program Eligibility Criteria. The Renfrew County Housing Corporation Board of Directors approved the proposed eligibility criteria as outlined in the chart below and it is retroactive to April 1st and it is the preferred option. Bylaws, item number six, Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement 2024, Ontario Works Administration Funding. Resolution number CS-CC-24-04-18, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to enter into a 2024 Ontario Works Administration Transfer Payment Agreement with the Minister of Children, Community and Social Services and the background is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Immon, Grills, Mayville, Nicholson and Service. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council? Item number one. Item number two. Member from North Ogallon Wildbeef Forest, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I guess my question is around the announcement that the federal government made as far as funding a, a breakfast program for schools. I guess I'm curious if staff has any idea when that funding will be rolled out or if in fact, if the federal budget isn't adopted, does this program then die on the floor?
Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, Warden. I wanted through you to council. I'm not aware of really what the implications will, will be of that. I can certainly endeavor to bring that answer back to, to council.
Thank you. And just very quickly, some of the things that are concerning, as the Chair noted, that in our community, nearly one in six, 17% of households are food insecure. And in, in Ontario, one in four children or 24.6% live in food insecure households, which affects nearly 700,000 children. So, you know, just very quickly, those are some of the issues that are in the reports. Excellent report. I used it the other day when I was speaking with somebody, took some numbers out of it. Item number three. Item number four. Item five. Item six. The report as a whole. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you. So you've heard the report, you've heard the comments. I'll ask, I'll take the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you, council. And we'll move to the Health Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of county council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. As information item is beginning with number one, similar to Community Services, the community programs, Mesa, Mesa hosted in collaboration with 20 community partners, as we noted earlier in the striking committee and the, what is going to be coming forward to county council with respect to the development of a Community Drug Strategy Steering Committee. We are, I think, have really begun to shine a spotlight on this and I think that then as now, it's important to note that this is going to take a whole of society response. So very pleased at the outreach that is done here. You will note in the third paragraph, some pretty sobering statistics here as well in 71 encounters and that this outreach is now beginning to gain traction. Hopefully it is, it is going to provide substantial assistance to these folks. And you'll note also in our resolutions that we are beginning to close down the gaps with addiction treatment services as well and that's coming forward later in my report, Mr. Chair. Item number two is Community Paramedic Response Unit. As council is very much aware, this is, there are several prongs, if you will, to community paramedicine in Renfrew County. And, you know, the, the, the community paramedics are constantly upgrading their skills and expanding their scope and upgrading even the technology that we have available to us to make it much more streamlined as how they can continue to meet the needs of our community. Certainly the most known community paramedic initiative was VTAC, which was created locally to respond to a local need and has been filling that need and we are continuing to do that in our outreach in several vectors, all at the same time. Item number three, Mr. Warden, is the Medical Priority Dispatch System. As council will recall, there's, this is a substantial upgrade in the algorithm, if you will, but also the training of the individuals at the central ambulance communication centers, which is with the intent that it is going to become much more focused, that the role of those, those dispatchers at the CAC centers will be able to provide a much more efficient and streamlined response, that they will have the capacity and the training to, to make, ensure or have a much more heightened appropriate response at the appropriate time and the appropriate place. And this is a substantial advancement and very pleased that the County of Renfrew is in fact, in one of the, in the first of, I think, three tranches of the rollout of this across the province. Item number four is the Ontario Budget and this is in particular to, to long-term care. I will note the discussion at the Health Committee also is each of these, I think it is E, I think there are five, that's correct, there are five different envelopes here and the, the, I'm not entirely sure. I think that the county will be eligible for each of these funding envelopes and these are in augmentation to the amounts that were anticipated when the budget was put together. I do note, Mr. Burke and Mr. Blackmore have suggested a review. I am not subject to their review, so my own mathematics is suggesting that the eligibility across all five of these funding envelopes looks to me like it's going to be in excess of $2 million and that is a substantial investment and a needed investment in long-term care in the County of Renfrew, but of course, right across the province of Ontario. Item number five, the Homes 2024 Strategic Operational Plans and Health Committee and the County Council approved the Strategic MAC 2018 to 2024 and this will be picking up for the next period moving forward. Moving on then, Mr. Warden, to resolutions. Item number six is the Business Case at Bonnershire Manor, Resolution Number H-CC-24-04-64. Moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve the designation of the vacant full-time unit clerk position to a staffing clerk position at Bonnershire Manor effective May 1st, 2024 and the background is attached for council's consideration. Moving on to bylaws. Item seven is Addiction Services Contract for Mesa. There are two distinct resolutions as a component of this, these bylaws. Mr. Warden, so by your leave, Resolution Number H-CC-24-04-60. Moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to sign a letter of agreement with McKay Manor as represented by Community Withdrawal Management Services of Renfrew County and Addiction Treatment Services for the provision of addiction and withdrawal services related to the Mesa program. And the second of these, Mr. Warden, Resolution Number H-CC-24-04-61. Moved once again by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to sign a letter of agreement with Renfrew Victoria Hospital as represented by Addiction Treatment Services for the provision of addiction and withdrawal services related to the Mesa program. Once again, Mr. Chair, the background is attached for council's consideration. Item eight is one-time increase to long-term care home funding and in fact, this is where the rubber is meeting the road on one of those five new envelopes. This would be the minor capital component. Resolution Number H-CC-24-04-65. Moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to sign the 2023-24 One-Time Increase to Long-Term Care Home Funding Agreements to assist in relieving financial pressures and addressing key priorities related to the Ontario Fire Code requirements. to the Ontario Fire Code requirements, addressing deferred maintenance, and proceeding with redevelopment projects in the amount of $2,543 per bed with Ontario Health, and once again, the background is attached. Item nine is the Request for Proposal for Domestic Hot Water Boiler Replacement at Bonnershire Manor. Resolution Number H-CC-24-04-66. Moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw to award the Request for Proposal BM-2024-02 Domestic Hot Water Boiler Replacement Project for Four New Boilers at Bonnershire Manor to Safco Electric Heating and Plumbing from Pembroke, Ontario, at the quoted price of $166,000, $166,000, inclusive of HST, as approved in the Bonnershire Manor 2024 capital budgets. And the only thing I wish to draw council's attention to is the approved budget for this was $250,000, so a substantial savings over budget at the all-in cost of $166,000, all of which, Mr. Chair, is, is provided by myself as Chair, along with Committee members Imo, Grills, Jan, Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. Comments, questions, concerns from members of council on item number one? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Warden. I just wondering if, if I could ask on the Mesa project, so we've got several things going on, and in terms of a teaser, if I could just ask the chief to talk about the May 22nd event coming up in terms of, of Mesa, it is, it is supplementary to the collaborative meetings that we've had, it is pertinent to this. I just wonder if you could just give a quick teaser, commercial if you will, to May Committee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and the, and CEO. The information that's provided in today's report was really a foundational meeting and gathering of the essential groups related to the Mesa program, and trying to take a sort of a multidisciplinary, multi-lens approach. So the gathering of health service providers, community service providers, mental health providers, really provided an exceptional opportunity to get together, to be able to create or curate an opportunity on May 22nd, to bring together these groups and a broader stakeholder view of the issues pertaining to people who are challenged with homelessness, mental health, and addictions-related concerns, and do it in such a way that allows us to be able to not only inspire, but also transact with these organizations so that they're able to bring forward a kind of a maximum impact opportunity from each of their organizations, along with some of the change management that we've undertaken here at the county between development of property, community services, and emergency services. So the 22nd will, will be, have, have the feel, if you will, of part conference and part workshop, where there will be an opportunity for individuals to network, an opportunity to collaborate. I think we're going to take a World Cafe-type approach to a portion of the day to be able to put some significant problems to each of the table groups so that they can come back with recommendations for next steps, and then also hear from some thought leaders within our community and beyond our community about the issues related to homelessness, mental health, addictions, other more contemporary issues related to encampment management, as well as how do we best align our services to support this population. So all members of County Council are welcome to attend, and members from organizations that have something to contribute to the solution are being encouraged to attend as well. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Chief Nolan. And with that, any comments, questions on item one? Seeing none. Item number two. Item three, I'm sorry, member from North Agona Wilderforce.
Thank you, Chair, and I know it doesn't specifically speak to the Rennford County VTAC program, but the Community Paramedic Response Unit and the whole team of paramedics are certainly an integral part of the medical support services that are delivered to our residents. And just watching the news last night, it was quite interesting to see where the Pembroke Regional Hospital is announcing that patients can expect much longer wait times at the emergency department, and are in fact, encourage them not to report to the emergency department, but instead to contact VTAC. And so it emphasizes the importance, again, that this service is providing to our community, and putting again, a stress, and as the deputy chief spoke to, that they're at capacity as well, dealing with some of the responses to citizens. I'm just wondering maybe if Chief Nolan could add a little more background on that. Thanks.
Chief Nolan, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and as a result of the, the reduction in physician availability at Pembroke Hospital, we have a number of different concerns. First and foremost, for the most acute and sickest of our population, we want to ensure that we don't have any offload delay associated with the paramedic response and transfer of care within the hospital. And as you know, we've also received offload funding to be able to support those activities. So we're hopeful that with provincial funding, we'll be able to increase our staffing directly within the emergency department. Secondly, as you heard in yesterday's news piece, and as the Pembroke Hospital has put out a notice to try to save the precious resources that they have for the sickest population, we have also been petitioning the province to increase the physician availability within VTAC. On a day-to-day basis, we are rolling over people to the next day, depending on the availability left within that day, depending on the time that you may call VTAC for assistance from, whether it be the, the primary care physicians or the paramedic and the clinics that we have available. We did put in, in this year's budget for an increase of 100 to 150 hours per week of physician staffing within VTAC. The irony is that the Pembroke crisis or challenge that's being put forward is a lack of local physicians to be able to staff those positions within the Pembroke Regional Hospital for, for their own reasons. We actually have physicians who are on a waitlist to work for VTAC. So we have the ability to actually increase and surge our capacity from physicians, some local, many from elsewhere in Ontario, to be able to provide service. So while we're grateful for the acknowledgement that VTAC can certainly continue to support our partners in hospital, and in the emergency department, we're also looking to the province. We have yet to receive a funding letter from the province for VTAC. So while the signals that we've received are that we will not be receiving the increase that we've asked for, perhaps this is an opportunity before the province puts pen to paper in terms of our funding allocation for this year, to honor our request for 100 to 150 additional hours per week of physician funding, to be able to blunt not only issues related to Pembroke Hospital, but also to be able to ensure that all of our community have access to care where they need it, when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the member from Bonnershire Valley?
Thank you, Warden. I just want to follow up with my colleague's comments about the news story yesterday because it was of concern when you're talking about an ER and the lack of staffing. What does this mean for our paramedics that are seconded with PRH? Does it have any ill effect to that program, and could they be utilized somewhere else?
Chief Nolan, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. We've been in discussions with Pembroke Hospital, and we certainly continue to offer our support. Obviously, it's most important to us that the 911 paramedics are available to respond into the community and are not tied up in offload delays. So first and foremost, that transfer of care component is essential as well. However, where the hospital may request additional support, so as you know, we've also had paramedics working in the department, shoulder to shoulder with the physicians and nursing staff providing care, I think that the direct impact will be an increased workload to those individuals and other stressors on an already strained system. However, we do have, as I said, the, the offload funding available to us, and Pembroke Hospital, I think it's important to note that they've been an exceptional partner in this regard. They've been very innovative with us and have continued to staff us from their budget to have paramedics supporting in the department. So given the late-breaking news this week that they're struggling with their physician staffing, I certainly see a role for the paramedics to, to help mitigate some of those pressures, but I think that would be a bit of a pivot and something that we would look to the Pembroke Hospital to identify as an opportunity, knowing that we're in contact with our partners there on a regular basis.
Thank you. And the member from Pedawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, could I just get a brief, very brief definition of the three bullet points in number two? I'm not sure what the CareDove referral platform is, skin tear pilot, and the otoscope?
I nodded.
I wasn't sure which nod that was, so thank you, Mr. Warden. So the, the items included related to CareDove is that most agencies that have a referral process have moved to CareDove as an electronic referral process. So if you're receiving home and community care, for example, and you have a need for community paramedic home visit, they can then simultaneously make that referral directly to the community paramedics and vice versa. And this product is now being used across primary care, home and community care agencies across the region, and it's been, I would say, a highly successful program because it integrates a number of other softwares and becomes a common bridge. So we often talk about how these things don't talk to one another. CareDove is what pulls those different softwares together to allow us to not only talk together but share information and complete referrals. So if I send you a referral, I can see that it's sent, you can see that it's received, and then they converse. So it allows us to track in a more intelligent way than we are doing currently between agencies. And this is something that Ontario Health has been promoting across all of Ontario. So we're one of the early adopters within this program, and other agencies are already on board. The second component is to the skin tear pilot, so there's been a significant amount of need in the community for wound care, and wound care is something that if you don't get on it quickly, can often turn into infection, turn into other complications, result in antibiotic therapy, hospitalization, or the 911 paramedics needing to take you back and forth. So by providing this training and the referral pathways associated with that, the paramedics are able to provide you more comprehensive wound care in your home, so as to prevent the need for antibiotics and transfer to hospital for additional care. So skin tear, just, you know, as a term, can mean a lot of different things, but typically where you have a layer or two layers of skin that are being removed, that can be a result of a pressurized ulceration, for example, or a fall, and if, if you've spent time with people that are on blood thinners or advanced age, it doesn't take much to cause what seem like insignificant issues that can become significant and potentially even life-threatening where infection is not adequately managed. So it's just one of the areas that we're pushing into in terms of that population. Then the last one, related to the use of otoscopes, otoscope meaning we can look in your ear, for example, be able to identify any objects, any swelling, and be able to more adequately manage. And that's something that you commonly see in your doctor's office. It's something that wasn't, not existing within the traditional 911 paramedic service, but it is something that we now have available to the community paramedics. And with the advancements in Bluetooth technology, we can also share that imagery and be able to get you an antibiotic, for example, for otitis media immediately and get you into care, as opposed to you needing, again, to go to the hospital, or if you're lucky enough to have a family doctor, go to the family doctor. We're now able to do that diagnosis and share that, any of that imagery with any of our VTAC physicians, for example, so that we can get you a script, get your referral, and be able to manage your care. And in some cases, as benign as it may seem, being able to clean out someone's ear allows us to actually see what's going on in the ear. And, and many people wait a significant amount of time where they have otherwise hearing loss, the community paramedics can manage that and provide more of a comprehensive approach to that care. So thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Any further questions? Item number two. Seeing none. Item three. Item four. Item five. Item six. Item seven. Really glad to see the, the outreach and the, and the locking into existing services to ensure that our Mesa program has the ability to treat and assist all members of our community. Item number eight. Member from Deep River, please.
Excuse me. Thank you, Warden Imo. Trying to think of what my question was on eight. Oh, so the wording in eight is, where'd it go? I don't know where it went. The wording in eight is one-time increase in funding. So is that one-time only funding, or is it one-time increase? So it'll be, the, the funding envelope's increased, and next year it'll be the same amount, the year after that be the same amount? Or is it just a one-time funding envelope? The one-time, one-time increase is confusing to me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blackmore?
Thank you, Chair, through to council. The, the increase is just that it's a one-time, it's not an ongoing increase, it's a standalone.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number nine. The report as a whole. Can I have a mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
You've heard the report and the, the presentations. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you, council. And with that, I'll take the opportunity to bump development and property up past operations. So if the Chair could proceed, please.
Thank you, Warden. To the council of the corporation of the County of Rennfrew, members of County Council, we, your Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is the Affordable Housing Summit. This took place on April the 4th, 2024, at the MyFM Centre in Rennfrew. There was an excellent turnout, a great representation from funding partners from the federal government, the provincial government, the contractors, some of the local developers, and of course, county staff, and some of municipal participants as well. And Paul Morrow, who helped pull this all together, will be putting together a final report to bring back to council at a future date. At this time, I would like to turn to Tina, who did a, has a five-minute video on the actual event. So Tina, if you could, please.
The main thrust of this housing summit is really sharing of ideas, try and find a solution or possible solutions of the housing crisis. I think everyone here that's attending is here for a very good reason. We have, we acknowledge there's a housing crisis. We have a role to play within, within this housing crisis for a solution. Whether we build new houses, well, whether we support developers or builders, we're here to, to really challenge each other to find a solution.
You know, the County of Rennfrew and the Wardens Caucus and this community, if not us, who? And it's going to be nobody. So it has to be us. The responsibility now passed to the people who are in this, that were in the room today. Housing is a, is a basic requirement, a basic need of everybody, and we want a healthy community, we want economic development, and those go hand in hand, and I think that's why it's important.
So for the county to have brought so many different players, if you want to call it that, from different sectors of the housing, advocates, contractors, and builders, and municipalities, is absolutely critical for us to be able to find out what is specifically needed here in Rennfrew County, and how can we, how we can take that message back, on my part, to the province and collaborate with the feds as well about how we're going to build the homes that are necessary over the next several years.
In the current development market, there's a few key challenges. There is a labor shortage, which is often referenced, that is a very real thing. I'm actually a carpenter by training, moved into land development throughout my career, and, and there is, there is no question that there are some challenges there. In addition to that, in, in the current market that we have, there are financial challenges. Affordable housing development is like any other development. It has to pencil out, there's a bottom line that makes it work, and as costs have risen over the last number of years with inflation and the other pieces, it hasn't gotten easier to develop. So the, the money is the biggest piece that the challenge these days.
I definitely see advantages to developing in this area. There is ample land, there is a genuine interest, and we need to get the decision-makers together because I think it can be done absolutely. it can be done absolutely.
The housing summit really represents an opportunity to be able to take care of one of the cornerstones of poverty, homelessness, mental health, and addictions for our most vulnerable population here in Renfrew County.
Mesa represents coming together of the Development and Property Department, Community Services Department, and paramedics. And really, it's our opportunity to collaborate in a new way to be able to solve issues that have been here in Renfrew County for many years, but also emerging in the post-pandemic period where the financial pressures that people are feeling, the mental health crisis that's emerging from the pandemic, and as well, the lack of affordable housing are really the three areas that we're focusing on, to be able to provide a greater safety net for the people in Renfrew County and improve ultimately our economic status, as well as living conditions for everyone in Renfrew County.
This is one of county's strategic goals. We're certainly seeing it from the Community Services Department, about many vulnerable individuals that are struggling with health and wellness. And increasing the supply of housing in our community is definitely going to help us address those challenges that we're seeing.
There's a willingness to, to move forward in, in looking at housing and homelessness and service delivery in Renfrew County. There's a kind of exciting dynamic in terms of working not only with social services but with developers and with multiple levels of government. The, the energy in the room is quite palpable. It's quite exciting that way.
I think there's a lot of possibilities here. There are a lot of options being presented. And hopefully, the community, the people that are here from nonprofits or builders will seek us out to build partnerships to make these housing units come to life, come to fruition. There's so many possibilities and the county is so open to any type of partnership that can further along this path.
Today, it's just interesting to see all the different parties that are here that are representing different aspects or different segments across the spectrum of housing, whether it's developers, not-for-profits, municipal leaders, even just interested community members. And you can feel the passion. Everybody wants to try to solve the problem. This is one of the first steps in trying to get there.
Well, being from the Ottawa Valley is what motivates us. You know, knowing that there's such a big issue, five to 10-year waiting for a house, you know, is unacceptable, to be honest. And it's, it's very sad to see. And we want to put a dent into that a little bit while, you know, providing the community, you know, jobs and security in that, in that different ways.
Just wanted to say that it's, it's a great opportunity to meet some of the different people in the county who are working to find a solution and, you know, really get the county moving forward to make it a place that we can take care of a lot more individuals moving into the area.
Thank you, Tina. Very well done.
Thanks, Tina. Information, information item number two is a bylaw governing County of Renfrew-owned recreational trails. And the county has two designated recreational trails, the Algonquin Trail and the KNP Recreational Trail, with each trail governed by separate bylaws setting the rules for the use of the trails. So, for consistency, the county wants to include any future trails and bring everything under a single bylaw. And that's the reason for this bylaw coming forward to the county. Item number three is a bylaw to prohibit certain activities on County of Renfrew forests and/or trails. And again, this is a bylaw to bring in alignment with the new bylaw being adopted for trails, that it also applies to the county-owned forests, and will govern the use of these lands that are, are also, can be linear parks, and governs the activity of those people utilizing or accessing our county forests. Item number four is the Ottawa Valley Tourism Conference Annual, Annual General Meeting and the Tourism Awards. And, and I'll just make reference to the Tourism Award winners. The Tourism Champion was Ron Moss of the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance. The Business Organization of the Year was the Somewhere In in Calabogie. The event of the year was the Pembroke Regional Silver Stick Tournament. The Sustainability Champion was Anapioya Cabin Company in Deep River. The new tourism product was Ottawa Valley Farm to Fork. And the Tourism Marketing Award went to Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization. And I'll just turn to my colleague, Rob Weir, from Township of Greater Matawaska, just to, as he's part of the committee, to provide a little more information.
Thank you. And, thank you. And through you, Chair. It was a very well-attended AGM and, and conference. We had some keynote speakers. Sarah Norton was there and was very well-received, as well as we had a welcome to the land and flash history from Christine Lucco, I always pronounce her name wrong, Luca, Luca Witch, I believe it is, Luca Savage. Thank you. So, it was very well-attended. We had roundtable discussions, panel discussions. So, overall, the day was extremely successful. It was great to see not only the winners of the Tourism Awards, but all of the nominees from pretty well, I think we had most of our townships represented in, in that, in that area. And it was great to see that we had support from our municipalities as well at this event. So, it was very well-received. And congratulations to the Ottawa Valley Tourism Group, the team here that put this together. It was very, very good. And thank you.
Thank you for that. Information item number five is the Pembroke approving the implementation of the municipal accommodation tax. So, the Pembroke City Council did vote in favor of a 4% municipal accommodation tax. And part of that money that is collected will go back to the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association. And this is a step forward for other municipalities who may want to also become part of the municipal accommodation tax program. Item number six is the promotion of La Chute Champlain, and this is part of OT, OVTA's ongoing travel trade efforts, and was featured in the Takeover in March's digital issue of Quebec La Meg. Item number seven is the Enterprise Renfrew County Business Consultations and Services Year-End Report. And it's worth mentioning that this report indicates the number of business consultations by each municipality. And it does show that there is quite an engagement with the county and the lower-tier municipalities in the business Item number eight is the increased program funding to small business enterprise centers. And it's an announcement that the County of Renfrew was informed by the Ministry of Economic Development and Job Creation and Trade that they will be receiving over the next two years an additional $50,000 in funding. So, that means increased grant allocations and program delivery funding for these important programs, the programs being the starter company and the summer company. Again, more details will be coming forward in the future. Item number nine is the Beechburg Track Chemical Site Preparation. So, on October 14th, 2024, a request for quotation was issued to six known service providers for chemical site preparation of the Beechburg Track. In talking to Director Davis, the mechanical site preparation occurred in the fall of 2023. And only if the mechanical site preparation did not address a lot of the undergrowth and, and invasive species concerns, would the, would the chemical site preparation proceed? Item number 10 is the Renfrew County Place Fit-Up of 450 O'Brien. And this is the fit-up of the first floor at the previous, where the previous tenant, the Renfrew County District Health Unit, was located. And it is now the new location for the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center. And certainly looking forward to utilization of that space for our VTAC program as we move forward. Item number 11 is the Information Dashboards. And this involves the GIS Division, which has created two dashboards to view information regarding building activity and vacant land availability within Renfrew County. Item number 12 is Phase One of the Flood Plane Mapping. And this was a partnership with Natural Resources Canada and the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, Renfrew County, and local municipalities to prepare. And basically, this was to collect data for preparing for an effective response to any future potential flood mapping funding And moving on to resolutions, item number 13 is the Community Improvement Plans. And I have a resolution number DP-CC-24-04-47, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council directs staff to undertake an official plan amendment and development of a regional incentives program. And also, as part of this community improvement plan is Resolution Number DP-CC-24-04-48, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council directs staff to pursue a change to the regulation under the Planning Act to become a prescribed upper-tier municipality for the purposes of developing an Affordable Housing Community Improvement Plan. And if I could, with your indulgence, Chair, I'd turn it over to Director Davis to provide a little more detail.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Warden. And through you to council. So, this is an ongoing issue that we brought to county council through Councilor Lynch and the Brownfields Development and Incentivization. So, staff did meet with ministry staff. And with that, Mr. Howarth and Mr. Burke came to the realization, two things that were going on. We don't have the official plan documentation needed to do certain things, as you see in the report. And also, we're not even allowed to have a CIP unless the province says so. And that's why you see as a recommendation, those two different, separate recommendations moving forward, if there's interest from, interest from county council to do so. If need be, I did bring in Mr. Howarth, our manager of planning services, if there's more detailed questions required. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Item number 14 is the communal water and wastewater systems. Resolution Number DP-CC-24-04-53, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. Whereas the Province of Ontario has stated, has a stated goal of 1.5 million housing units built within 10 years, whereas Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, EOWC, has initiated a seven-in-seven-plus regional housing plan to increase the supply of affordable housing across eastern Ontario. Whereas proximity, proximity to existing water and wastewater plants is a limiting factor in rural townships for higher-density housing on suitable land for such development. Whereas communal water and wastewater systems will allow for higher-density housing developments where hookup to large water and wastewater plants is impractical. Whereas the County of Frontenac and other jurisdictions have formed a municipal services corporation to manage communal water and wastewater systems in their lower-tier municipalities. Whereas a municipal service corporation can provide other services that are impractical for a single lower-tier municipality to manage efficiently on their own, therefore, be it resolved that the County of Renfrew directs staff to prepare a report within three months on steps to form a municipal services corporation to address communal water and wastewater systems in Renfrew County, or join another municipal services corporation and possible scope of services that could be provided for consideration by county council. And then bylaws, item number 15 is a bylaw for enforcement of Algonquin Trail, Resolution Number DP-CC-24-04-44, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council adopt a bylaw to authorize Protac 5, Pembroke, Ontario, to act as a bylaw enforcement officer on County of Renfrew-owned recreational trails on behalf of the County of Renfrew. And this was brought forward as it was becoming more difficult to secure the services of the OPP who do patrol the trails. Their time was certainly limited, and their available dates were also limited. So, this will provide for more enforcement coverage on the county trails. Item number 16 is Official Plan Amendment, OPA, Number 44, Alternative Notice Provisions. Resolution Number DP-CC-24-04-49, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council adopt a bylaw to approve Official Plan Amendment, Number 44, to introduce an alternative notice provisions policy into the official plan. And once again, this is now covered by Bill 185 that the government just introduced, with the recognition that the print media resources are dwindling, and this provides an opportunity to utilize more, more available services for notification. Item number 17 is Official Plan Amendment, OPA, Number 45, Draper, and Resolution Number DP-CC-24-04-50, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council adopt a bylaw to approve Official Plan Amendment, Number 45, to re-designate, re-designate lands from Rural Exception 4 to Rural Exception 20. And again, the background information is all included with that report. Item number 18 is Official Plan Amendment, OPA, Number 46, Robinson Line. Resolution Number DP-CC-24-04-51, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council adopt a bylaw to approve Official Plan Amendment, Number 46, to re-designate lands from Rural Exception 16 to a rural designation. And this change is a result of upgrades that were done to the access road, which was prohibiting development in that area. But since the upgrades to the road have been carried out, that is no longer the issue. And that, Chair, is my report, which is respectfully submitted on behalf of committee members, Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Service, Watt, and Weir.
Thank you, Chair. And to council, questions, concerns, issues, item number one? Item number two? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. A member from Whitewater.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to make the comment on the Affordable Housing Summit. Thanks again to the staff that put on the first one ever, and I appreciate the efforts there. And I just wanted to remark, I really appreciated not just all, all of the presentations, but one in particular, the CADCO, is that, I said that right? I'm giving the nod. CADCO and their support to nonprofits, nonprofit organizations in the community. And I think, what an incredible resource. And I just hope that we can continue to forge that networking opportunity, tie that, that organization right into us, so we can facilitate church groups or other not-for-profits that want to build affordable housing. We have a, we have an excellent facilitator in that organization. So, thank you, and I appreciate again the staff for setting this up.
Great. Thank you. Nothing further on item one. We'll move to item two. Oh, I'm sorry. A member from La Rancun Valley.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking more for confirmation, requesting confirmation on item number two, and which kind of overlaps with number three, that is the Algonquin and the KNP Trail. The new bylaw will now permit dirt bikes and motorcycles on all trails. The concern there is that I want confirmation that the dirt bikes do, in fact, require insurance and a license to be on the trail, and that further, the bylaw to hire the new enforcement company will endeavor to ensure that these dirt bikes are insured and acting properly on the trail. The dirt bike operators are usually the younger people, and they do intend to speed a little bit, if not a lot, and create more noise than usual. And the reason for the concern, of course, And reason for the concern, of course, is that one area in Laurentian Valley on the trail has a number of homes that are greatly affected by, by this. So, just looking for confirmation that that is the case on the insurance and the licensing on these, and that the effective bylaw will take care of those abusers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, or Mr. Perkins? Mr. Davis? Okay.
Sure, one of my last times dealing with trails, I guess, through the striking committee this morning, but I don't mind trying to answer the question for, for Committee and County Council. So just as a background, when we introduced a trail management plan for the KNP Trail back in 2000, and 2001, I do believe, we allowed dirt bikes, and it continues to be so today. When we created the bylaw for the Algonquin Trail back in 2017, the discussion at the time, through the elected and through staff recommendations, was not to include dirt bikes at the time. There was concerns about the use of dirt bikes in built-up areas. You may recall, it's a little different at the KNP Trail section because it's between Calabogie and the town of Renfrew. We were a little concerned about, at the time, for the Algonquin Trails in built-up areas. Since that time, we've received confirmation that dirt bikes will be required and have to be required to have insurance and ownerships. And so that's why we see in the recommendation today that we want to blend the two, the two trails together. We have approval at the KNP Trail, now we want approval at the Algonquin Trail methodology. So that's why you see the approval of the, the inclusion of the dirt bikes. And to answer your second question, yes, the new enforcement company will enforce the bylaw that they have to have an insurance and licensing for dirt bikes. But just keep in mind, this Protac 5 is one company, we will still lean on the OPP when and where necessary. We've asked the OPP save team, especially during the winter months, to patrol the trails, and they still do. So we have great respect for the OPP, but we realize there are limitations in staffing and, and some of our costs, too. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you.
Thank you for the confirmation.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Warden, and through you to County Council. Just to add to that, also, the RCA TV group, you will require a sticker from them to travel on the Algonquin Trail. So, and also, just for clarification, it won't be strictly dirt, like a motocross-type motorcycle, it'll be a motorcycle with lights rear and front, so that's a, that's a distinction as well. So it will be enforced.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to item number three now. Item four. Item five. Six. And seven. Looks like a very busy year for Enterprise Renfrew County, which is great. Item eight. Item nine. Item ten. Item eleven. Item twelve. Item thirteen. Member from Armpire?
Thank you, Warden. Just an update for the CIP and Armpire, the construction site has started, so there'll be apartments forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen. Member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, and just to follow up on my colleague's comments from the township of Laurentian Valley, in terms of the dirt bikes, so should this get passed through, and we do in fact get the services of Protac 5 to enforce the trail? I know we talked about this at DNP, about purchasing some type of radar gun that they can use to enforce speeds. Is that something we will discuss once we decide who we have in place there? Because I think in terms of the comments by my colleague, it is the dirt bikes that are, tend to be the speeders on the trail. So it would be nice if our enforcement company had a means to enforce the speed on the trail.
Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, and through you, Warden. So yeah, so we're, we're investigating the idea of purchasing it ourselves to give to the Protac 5, because right now they do not have this, this capability. And you are correct, the dirt bike users of the trail typically are local, younger people, and we're hoping with this, this enforcement, whether it's speeding and or licensing, will curb the issues that you're facing here in, or sorry, in the town of Petawawa.
Thank you. So item sixteen. Member from Deep River, please.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Excuse me. Perhaps just a comment on the operational side of this, or the implications of this. I just want to point out that a lot of the, the ways that we can notify the public are in an electronic format, and not all of, of our residents in Renfrew County have access to that. So operationally, I'm hoping that staff will continue to use all the methods, methods that are provided within this amendment for notification on issues, so that the, the public is aware of what's coming and what's coming up when there's proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Davis?
Thank you again, Warden. And so the intent of this OPA 44 is not to stop using the local media, local print media. This is, this what, the amendment will, what we'll do is, if in case, the when scenario, if there is no print media, we'll have avenues, ways to inform the, the public, whether it's mail, whether it's registered mail, digital versions. But just to reassure the public that we will not stop using our print media that we have in place. This is what they call, and Bruce is here to talk about, if you needed to, the enabling bylaw. We're enabling the possibilities. If the print media is not in place, we have ways to notify the public in planning matters. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Member from Bonchar Valley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Davis. I think it's a prudent move, knowing the unfortunate nature of print media at this time. And I do agree with my colleague that not everybody is on social media. I think most people have email, but I think it would be very different, difficult to, you know, sort of harvest those emails. But I, I think that in light of print media's future, I think this is a very prudent move. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on item sixteen? Seeing none, we'll move to item seventeen. Item eighteen. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bromley, item seventeen?
That's correct, Mr. Warden, thank you. Through you to Mr. Davis, possibly Mr. Howarth. In this instance, the development seems to be substantially larger than would typically be handled by consent. Certainly, particularly given the recommendation, I'm not intrinsically opposed to this. My concern, though, is how distinct is this development? I.e., what precedent is being set in the County of Renfrew with respect to planning if a development for a layperson as me is clearly in the realm of subdivision? Even as I'm looking at the mapping of this, or I went to the County GIS as well for the overhead picture, I'm not, I'm not sure what the proponent is anticipating for access. I don't know if this is like a common elements condominium development. I'm not sure if a requirement is going to be a, a private road agreement. In the end, I don't, it's not my intent to be micromanaging planning, but this seems clearly in the realm of subdivision. So in this event, where the, the recommendation that it is approached from a subdivision development to rescind that, and in fact, support that it be through the consent practice, how many of these are we likely to encounter? And how, how wide is that door being left ajar that is going to be a precedent set?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Warden, and through you. I can clearly say that this is not precedent-setting. I've been here at the County of Renfrew for 21-plus years, and even as a GIS or a mapping person, previous managers of Planning Services approved things like this in the past. You might remember, we did this just recently for a person in Whitewater region. So it's going to be a case-by-case basis when the, the planning staff look at these proposals, whether it's a severance or a subdivision, and make their decisions based on the case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Supplementary?
And ultimately, the, the foundational principles, whether it be the PPS, the Planning Act, what have you, what kind of documentation that provides the guidance, the principles are, will, and are continuing to be upheld, correct?
Mr. Davis?
Always through the lens of the Planning Services, and yes.
Thank you. Any further questions on seventeen? Item eighteen. The report as a whole? Member from Whitewater, please.
Thanks, Chair. And now I quickly lost my spot. Just coming back to the item on the MSC for wastewater water, wastewater water systems? Communal systems?
Item fourteen?
Please. So the question I just wanted to put forth was, this investigation that we first, we're supporting staff to conduct, how does, how do we include the private ownership of such systems in that study? We're exclusively looking at MSC ones that we would own or facilitate the development of? How do we encompass other similar opportunities like private systems? Is that included in this analysis?
Mr. Davis?
Through you, so it'll probably be an overall look at this whole idea of communal services, whether it's on municipal lands or private lands. And there should be a distinction, it could be start, starting off on a private land system, and then moved over to the municipal system, so that's why it will include, the review from staff will include the, the private land systems, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on the report? Mover, please.
So moved, Warden.
All right, thank you. You've heard the report and all of the other information. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you, Council. And with that, I'd like to suggest we break for lunch and come back at 1:00. And thank you, operations, for your patience. And thank you operations for your patience.
And thank you everybody. I apologize for the late start. We're seven minutes past the time. It just takes a little while to get organized and can't remember what the agenda... oh, operations please.
Is there anybody who'd like to go before me?
Yes, thank you. If you'll turn to your FNA report.
To the council, the corporation, of the county, and for members of county council,
number one, the monthly progress, uh, project status report, uh, appendix one, uh, you'll see the, the big chart and, and where we are on projects. Um, item number two, the capital program, uh, variance report as appendix two. Item number three, winter operations, uh, table one and, uh, for the, uh, significant weather events and appendix number three with the five-year summary. Um, item number four, the spring load restrictions, uh, and the lifting of that, uh, or when it's commencing, sorry. And then, uh, I'll move on to resolutions. Item number five, County Road 512 Queen Street, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four thirty-seven, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that'll, that a letter of support under the warden's signature be sent to the township of Killaloo, Hagerty and Richards to endorse their application to my Main Street Community Activator Program for the Killaloo, a Main Street Enhancement Project, and the background is provided there for all of council. Uh, item number six, Township McNabb-Brayside, uh, request to alter posted speed limit resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-one, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that county council deny the request from the township of McNabb-Brayside to lower the posted speed limits along County Road Three, Osborne Road between McLean Drive and River Road, and, uh, the background with the, uh, study that was done. And we'll move on to bylaws. Item number seven, cost share agreement with the town of Petawawa, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council adopt a bylaw to enter in to the attached agreement provided to provide, to provide funding in the amount of $2,460,000, uh, to the town of Petawawa for the reconstruction and urbanization of County Road Thirty-Seven Murphy Road. Uh, the background is there and that is a, uh, the upside limit to the county's, uh, portion of that project. Item number eight, um, uh, sorry, P W C twenty-two-four oh five, County Road Five Stone Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-two, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that county council approve contract P W C twenty-two-four oh five as submitted by To- Thomas Kavanaugh Construction Limited, Ashton, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road Five Stone Road, uh, from, um, Musk Road to Highway Sixty, a distance of 5.13 kilometers, Township of Adamston Bromley, in the amount of $1,413,700 plus applicable taxes, and the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. You'll see the, um, the tender results that came in and, uh, pleased to see that this one is coming in under, under budget also. Item number nine, P W C twenty-two-four oh eight, County Road Eight Cobden Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-three, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve contract P W C twenty-two-four oh eight as submitted by Walker Construction Niagara Falls, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road Eight Cobden Road from Highway Sixty to Urb- to Urban Limit, uh, a distance of 11.51 kilometers, Township of Adamston Bromley and Whitewater Region, in the amount of $1,197,073 plus applicable taxes, and the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. Um, once again, you'll see the, uh, the tender submission that is, that is there and, uh, further that this one comes in under budget also. Um, turn the page the right way. Thanks. Item number ten, P W, P W C twenty-two-four thirteen, County Road Thirteen Mountain Road Rehabilitation, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-four, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that county council approve contract P W C twenty-two-four thirteen as submitted by Greenwood Paving Pembroke Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, uh, for the rehabilitation of County Road Thirteen Mountain Road from Stafford Third Line to Highway Seventeen, a distance of 4.01 kilometers, uh, in the townships of Laurentian Valley and Whitewater Region, in the amount of $1,419,067 plus applicable taxes, and the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. Once again, the background, um, the results of the tender process and, uh, further project comes in under budget. Item number eleven, P W C twenty-two-four twenty-six, Contract Administration Services for the rehabilitation of County Road Structure B zero-zero-seven Butler Bridge, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-five, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve P W, uh, proposal, P W C twenty-two-four twenty-six as submitted by Stan Tech Consulting Limited, Ottawa, Ontario, for the contract administration and construction supervision services for the rehabilitation of County Structure B zero-zero-seven Butler Bridge, Township of Adamston Bromley, in the amount of $151,640 and 10 cents plus applicable taxes, and the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the professional services agreement for the service. Uh, the backgrounds you'll see there, uh, the, um, the proposal, uh, to accept this, uh, from this company is, is, uh, largely based on, uh, the evaluation of a, of a, uh, a competitive bid and the fact that this is the company that, uh, originally designed the, uh, this project. Item number twelve, P W C twenty-two-four twenty-four, County Structure B One Eighty-One Peter Black Bridge, uh, Rehabilitation, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-six, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve contract P W C twenty-two-four twenty-four, uh, as submitted by Bonusure Excavating Incorporated, Rentfrew, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road Structure B One Eighty-One Peter Black Bridge located on County Road Twenty-Four Whitewater Road, approximately 1.5 kilo- kilometers, uh, east of Highway Forty-One Township of Laurentian Valley, in the amount of $1,282,480 plus applicable taxes, and the county council adopt a bylaw to execute the contract. Uh, you'll see the background there, the, uh, tender submissions and, uh, happy to say, once again, uh, comes in under budget. Item number thirteen, traffic light, sorry, traffic signal upgrades, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-seven, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve the quotation as submitted by Partham Engineering Limited, Richmond, Ontario, for the supply and installation of traffic, uh, signal equipment at various, uh, County of Renfrew intersections within the town of Petawawa and the town of Laurentian Valley in the amount of $232,500 plus applicable taxes, and that the county adopt a bylaw to authorize the services. Um, sorry, and the, the background there is provided. Um, this, I, yeah, whatever, sorry. Uh, item number fourteen, contract P W O, uh, twenty-two-four oh one, uh, seven light duty pickup trucks, resolution number OPC C twenty-four oh four forty-eight, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that county council exercise their authority to waive irregularities contained within the bid submitted by Sergeanter Shev Buick GMC Cadillac Ottawa, Ontario, in accordance, um, with the County of Renfrew's corporate policy G A O one, procurement of goods and services, schedule B, irregulars, irregularities contained in the bid for contract P W O twenty-two-four oh one for the supply and delivery of seven light duty pickup trucks, and approve the submitted bid amount of $392,065 plus applicable taxes, and that county council adopt a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. Uh, the, uh, the irregularities were with one of the specs, uh, that was, uh, identified within the tender, uh, and staff was well aware that the, uh, the proposal from, uh, from this vendor, uh, did meet those requirements. However, in the tender document, it wasn't clarified whether they did or not. Um, so anyway, it has been, um, confirmed that the, the bid does meet the specifications put out in the tender document. Uh, all of which is respectfully, respectfully submitted by myself as chair and committee members Bennett, Emo, Lynch, McKenzie, Watt, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. Questions, comments, concerns from members of council on item number one? Item number two? Item three? Member from Adamston Bromley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, through you to, uh, probably to Mr. Perkins, but I will certainly defer to the chair. Uh, so there's a chart here on the significant weather events, uh, and I'm kind of curious, so the, the significant weather events are declared, uh, as, as somewhat of an indemnification, who knows for certain, uh, but when there is felt that there might be a challenge to meeting the minimum maintenance standards, which strike me as being minimum. So I'm kind of curious, in the, uh, significant weather events, how many times did we fail to meet our minimum maintenance standard?
Mr. Perkins, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden, and through you to the member from Adamston Bromley. Thankfully, we've never missed our minimum maintenance standards as of yet. Uh, significant weather events are, of course, we do have a standard operating procedure for it, so it has to be declared by Environment Canada, and it has to be within the County of Renfrew. And as you know, the geographical surroundings of the County of Renfrew, you may have snow and had clear weather this evening and not have had it in there prior. So, uh, we do use the significant, uh, weather event to our advantage, for sure, but thankfully, we've never missed the minimum requirement.
Okay, thank you. Supplementary.
So rather, "to our advantage" could also be deemed, uh, we exploit the significant weather event, um, avenue. The reason I'm going there is this is common. It is commonly done across the province of Ontario. The reason I asked you of how much of a threat it was or has been to our minimum maintenance standard is they have never struck me as being particularly onerous, the minimum maintenance standards. From Mr. Perkins' perspective and perhaps from, from, uh, Chair Doncaster's perspective, this is appropriate and responsible. But I think in taking the long view, uh, we have continually seen erosion, uh, of a municipality's reliance upon minimum maintenance standards, uh, when they are challenged. And my concern here is if we are routinely declaring significant weather events, I'm not entirely sure what makes them significant if we are still able to adhere to the minimum maintenance standards. And my concern here is in the long run, this is not going to be in our best interests to have been, um, suspending, if you will, uh, those minimum maintenance standards.
Uh, Chair, please.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Warden, Emo. Um, I think it's important to recognize that I think, uh, for due diligence and ensuring that, uh, we're, I guess, mitigating our liability, that, uh, if, if we think that we won't be able to meet the, the minimum, minimum maintenance standards that we have, that, uh, that could be impacted by a significant weather event, that, that we do take this action. Um, and I just pass to Mr. Perkins if he has anything further to add.
Please.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you, Warden, and through you. Uh, no, the minimum maintenance standards are indeed that, the minimum, and by using the, uh, significant weather event, it does, uh, reduce the county's liabilities over an extended period of time. So, so instead of the standard 12 hours to visit a road is now 16. So, and again, because of the geographical, uh, greatness of the County of Renfrew, we declare it for the whole county. So, in some situations, uh, the northern part of the county may be affected and the southern may not. So, so it's a, it's a blanket, uh, significant weather event.
And supplementary.
Uh, thank you. Just a final comment, uh, Mr. Chair. I do not dispute that that is the case, and in the near term, uh, this is, uh, certainly realistically, reasonably can be perceived as due diligence on our part. Ultimately, however, when challenged in, in an appropriate adjudicative setting, uh, I, I harbor very little doubt that it will not be looked, looked upon favorably, that routinely, uh, road authorities are setting aside a minimum standard. Um, and I think that it will eventually disappear. However, given that, that numerous municipalities have made this a practice, we are going to continue, we may as well continue, but I will tell you with absolute certainty that it's not going to survive, uh, 10 years' time if you're setting aside your minimum standard.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, five, uh, six, oh, I'm sorry, and member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Uh, I have to say this causes some concern, um, the fact that, uh, there's a municipality that has made a request to reduce the speed limit in their municipality, and as, the recommendation here is that that not happen based on the fact that if it were reduced, that enforcement would be a problem, that people would continue to speed because they've always sped on that stretch of road, and now that it's 60, they won't be able to adapt to it. With any road that the speed limit is lower, there's always going to be an educational period where people have to adapt to the new lower speed limit. And, uh, I think most municipalities know their own roads and what's going on and the safety and the danger. So there was a reason for this request, and I, I can only guess that it's because it's becoming more urbanized and, and they felt that they needed that speed limit reduced. So I, I can only offer, I guess, some, a suggestion that there may be other municipalities coming forward as we urbanize our county roads that go through our municipalities. Uh, as more and more homes get built up in these roads that has an 80 kilometer an hour speed limit, there's going to be more and more kids standing on the edge of that road waiting for a bus, kids getting off buses to walk home, there's postal vehicles dropping, stopping at every mailbox, and as it becomes more urbanized, there's all kinds of utilities, Bell, uh, telephone, Hydro, Gas, who are stopping on the sides of the roads and putting out cones. And I guess what I'm trying to say is that as these roads become more urbanized and a municipality recognizes that, and I know we say it's 80, but most people go 90 and there's quite a few going 100, that as these roads become that urbanized, to have cars going 100 kilometers an hour is an extreme safety hazard and an, an extreme danger to the residents of the municipality. So I'm just concerned that as time goes on and more of these county roads become urbanized and more municipalities come forward and say, "We'd like those speed limits reduced," to have it denied because we think it won't be enforceable, concerns me that we're overlooking the dangers to our residents and the hazards to our residents and the kids who are on that street. I guess that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Perkins, and then Adamston Bromley.
Yes, uh, thank you, Warden, and through you to county council. So, uh, the County of Ven- the County of Renfrew, we actually use the Ontario Traffic Manual to decide these. So, uh, as they come in on a case-by-case basis, that we actually have empirical data that tells us if we can speed up or slow down, because if not, we would be speeding and slowing people at whim. So we actually have empirical data that allows us to set proper speed limits, not only through the, the County of Renfrew, but through the province of Ontario. So, as we go forward, as those cases come into us, we will continue to do what we normally do, which is review every single one of them. If, if a road has become urbanized and there's so many entrances on that road, then that may qualify for a lower speed limit. But again, uh, as you know, county roads are designed to be collectors and arterials, they're meant to be high-speed roads. So unfortunately, uh, in this situation here, uh, once, once the data was collected and everything else, uh, that, that is one of the criteria in the Ontario Traffic Manual is that it will not be able to be enforced. Like, that's a, that's an actual term they use in there. So, we do have criteria and ratings for doing all the speeds throughout the county. So as they come in, we'll continue to, to do that and recommendations as such. And again, these are recommendations from staff using the Ontario Traffic Manual. If council decides to go against the direction of staff, that's entirely in council's whim.
Thank you. Adamston Bromley, please.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. My colleague from, uh, Petawawa makes a very compelling argument against ribbon development, uh, in his remarks. Uh, we also have adapted, uh, in Adamston Bromley, the Ontario Traffic Manual, the process, it's very objective. Uh, we, in very short order, had two, uh, roadways, residents along two roadways in our community that were requesting a diminishment, and in this event, uh, one did warrant, uh, a, a change, uh, and one did not. And in this event, one did warrant a change, and one did not. But it is objective. And anything outside of an objectivity becomes inherently political if it's not objective. And I would counsel to be very, very careful, counsel in this instance being advice, being very, very careful about making decisions that are outside of an objective measure. Similarly, you know, and I understand that it is happening, and it is happening in my community, just as it is happening in other communities. The means of reducing speeding traffic is not to lower the limit, it is to have enforcement. And lowering the limit is not going to, in my estimation, be the factor that is going to inhibit the speed of traffic that is traveling on any given road. And finally, as Mr. Perkins has said, the intent of county roads are to be those larger collector roads. So in fact, the scoring process that we have gone through, I believe even in this council, where there is a threshold, a points assigned on whether a roadway should be assumed by the upper tier, the speed is one of the integral components. I'm not sure how many points are assigned to that. But if the speed limit was actually reduced on some county roads, they may cease to be county roads at that point as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Yeah, I understand that there's a point system and empirical data that's collected, and that these decisions should be objective and based on the systems that are in place. But sometimes those empirical data, and all of those processes, and all of those point systems, don't account for what's actually happening along those stretches of road. So there could be 10 houses, and they could be all senior citizens in there, and there's no kids waiting for buses. But those 10 houses could have four kids each. And now that changes the whole concept of what's going on in the stretch of the road. So I understand that we should follow protocols and make sure that we, you know, objectively make decisions on what we're doing here. But sometimes it might take some further study, and just having people out on these roads, seeing what's going on every day. Because when it comes right down to it, it's the lives of the citizens in that town, and especially if it's kids. And for a town, and I'm just speaking on behalf of Petawawa here, for a town with almost 5,000 kids, there's a lot of kids on the roads. And a lot of our roads right now have an 80-kilometer speed limit, and it's pretty fast, even at 80. So not even taking into account the 95 and the 100-kilometer-an-hour speeders, but the fact that 80 kilometers an hour, you're doing the speed limit, you're following the law, and it's still too fast. So.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to item number seven. Item eight. Item, oh, I'm sorry. Member from North Algonquin Wilbur Force.
Just curiosity that the company, and, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one, I think. I'm on the wrong one, sorry.
Okay, item number nine. Member from North Algonquin Wilbur Force.
James wants a duo.
My apologies. I just had a question. This company being from Niagara Falls, do they have a regional office in our area? Do we have any experience having worked with them before? It just seems like an awfully long way to come to do a road project.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Warden. No, I will find out for sure, but not to my knowledge. But thankfully, we're using electronic bids and tenders, and we seem to be getting a lot of, a lot more interest throughout Ontario. So we will definitely keep track of this one.
And this also makes us compliant with PSAP, something with three numbers behind it. So thank you. The member from Abst. Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this had not occurred to me until actually Counselor Don, sorry, Bros had raised this. But I am even more intrigued, given the various tenders that are part of the package of the committee report. It appears that this was the sole tender in this particular instance. And I'm kind of curious, given the competitive nature of almost all other tenders here, how this one only garnered one tender.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Warden, and through you to Counsel and member from Abst. Bromley. This is, only one company produces this product that does it. It's a, this is a fiber mesh that they put into the tire, to the asphalt. So it's the first time, actually, we're going to use it in the County of Renfrew. It's been used through eastern Ontario, so we're leading edge, we're not bleeding edge. So yeah, this is, right now, this is the only company in Ontario that provides this for us.
Supplementary?
Yeah, so, and I'm, certainly it is, I'm intrigued at this. I appreciate the nature of trying to embrace changes. But it almost seems like this was going to be a sole source from the get-go, and it's being presented to us like it was a tendered contract, when it seems like it was a sole source contract. I wonder if that could be explained or expounded upon?
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Warden. No, it was publicly tendered. There is a second company in Ontario that does this. They did not bid. Now, there is discrepancies in which, what each company does, so, but no, it was publicly tendered. And there are two companies, but the other company didn't bid.
So this was not the only company that does this, then? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10. 11. Member from Whitewater, please.
Thanks, Warden. Just a question. It's an upgrade of existing traffic signals. I just wanted to clarify, the same capacity? Or is this an increase in the traffic signal, like a turn signal where there wasn't a turn signal before? And then the subsequent question to that is, do we have the indicators that would show that growth in requirement? Is this, you know, I'm leading back to that whole DCs. Do these naturally grow based on annual studies, driving it by traffic?
Thank you. And Chair, please.
The upgrades that are, that were put out in this contract will upgrade existing signals to make them compliant with the accessibilities for Ontario, disabilities, whatever, ODA. And in short, it's going to have the crossing, the timers that count down when the lights are going to change. So that's the biggest thing on that. And I'm pleased to say that we'll start moving forward with this within the County of Renfrew, and maybe that will encourage the province to move forward with their traffic signals and upgrade them to comply with their own legislation. Thank you.
Brought to you by the Glenn Doncaster Lobbying Company. Thank you. And the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Just wondering, what intersections are going to be upgraded?
Perkins?
Sorry, yes, thank you, Warden, and through you. I don't have the exact list, but what it is, my assumption here is all the traffic lights that we own in these two municipalities will be updated, so they're all ODOA compliant. So as you know, Petawawa already has a number of them, so, yeah. They'll be checked and made sure they're working as well.
Okay, thank you. Item number 14. The report as a whole, oh, I'm sorry, member Abst. Bromley.
This, nothing to apologize, this was the report as a whole. Mr. Warden, I just wanted to bring forward, council may actually recall, in January, when we saw January's report, and when we were developing January's budget, I think we had already had a tender in for a particular culvert structure, I think it was. I think it may have been in my municipality, actually. And then it gave us pause because it was $400,000 over budget, which was ostensibly setting a trend line. So I thought it would be worthwhile for council here where we currently are at. This month alone, on the various tenders, we're just under $1.3 million under budgeted across all of these. Year-to-date, we're just under $2 million under budget, with $8.5 million of projects still outstanding there in the pipeline. Either the tender has not yet closed, or it has not yet come before the operations committee. But it is, it does seem to be a disposition towards always surprising council of negativity. So I have taken it upon myself to be the bearer of good tidings and mathematics. So very pleased that we are, and Mr. Perkins, and the operations department as a whole, currently almost $2 million under budget. And I'm very pleased at the competitive nature of the construction trade, that we are seeing these very favorable results. This may become more pertinent as we get into finance and administration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, I'm sorry, Counselor from Petawawa?
Thank you, Chair. And just to follow up on my colleague's comments, that we are seeming to be under budget on a lot of these items. This is a question for Lee, I guess. Is this a result of favorable pricing and favorable bids? Or is it somewhat a result of us and our engineering companies setting our budgeted prices a little higher based on past years?
So these are favorable bids, they're coming in lower. The actual budgets were reduced slightly recently? So, but yeah, I mean, and you'll look at some of the tenders. I mean, they're relatively competitive, you know, across the board, so they're close. So, you know, the, I think the first one we dealt with in the year, maybe steel was driving the price, and now some of these ones, a lot of these ones include paving, so that the price for paving is better than it was. So there's a number of factors involved, but I think it's competitive pricing is most of it, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. Yes, actually, our benchmark cost, we did benchmark at $130, which was the price two years ago for actual tonnage of asphalt. And this year, we're seeing prices of $115. So it's very, very interesting that if you follow the New York Mercantile Exchange, which is where crude oil and asphalt prices are dictated, the price has not gone down. And contrary, the price of asphalt and oil and gas, as everyone has known, has gone up. So it's intriguing to see that we're almost 20, 11.5% lower pricing for asphalt since last year, even though it's gone up by 14% on the Mercantile Express.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, yes, and the timing also. This year was one of the first years that we've got all our tenders. Now, we still have a couple in the queue, as Counselor Don, who pointed out, but we were out early this year. And again, we're using electronic tendering, so we're seeing, well, as you can see from the bids, as the Chair pointed out, we're very competitive, so it's a bit exciting.
Member from Petawawa?
Thank you, Chair. That is good news. And just one final question on the seven trucks. I know there was a discussion earlier about buying white. Is that in fact what we're doing, or are we still going with the county red?
The original tender went out for red, but subsequent to that, it was updated to the white. So this was right in the middle of that being changed, confirm that when it was confirmed that the color could be changed, so that these are white.
Timing's everything.
And people call me a diva.
Yeah.
Yes, they do.
Well, thank you very much. And the report, please. Yes.
I'm just so happy to know that Michael has taken a page out of the newsroom and elected himself in charge of team morale.
Yeah, yeah, that's, striking committee reports coming up. So with that, any further comments on the report? Could I have a mover, please?
Yes, I just.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yeah. Briefly, just thank my colleague for the compliment on the great work of staff and committee in keeping all these projects coming in under budget. And it's my pleasure to move the $6 million in this report to be received.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments, questions? You've heard the report and the commentary. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to Finance and Admin, please. Chair?
I bring it in, Glenn spends it. To the council of the corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we are Finance and Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under Information, item number one, are the unaudited financial statements, and you will see below the surpluses in the General Fund, Miramishy Lodge, Bonnershire Manor, and Renfrew County Housing Corporation. Number two, welcome to North Algonquin Wilbur Force as the newest member of our municipal benefits. Number three, some sad news, Bev Zado, our employee health coordinator, is retiring as of May 30. And we did get an opportunity to say goodbye to Bev at our Finance and Admin meeting. We wish her all the best in her retirement. Number four, employee recognition. Q4, attached as Appendix 2, is the bulletin announcing the round of winners for the period October to December of 2023. Very nice to see that people are so engaged. Under Resolutions, number five, delegated authority policy. Resolution number FACC 24-04-43, moved by myself as Chair, second by committee, that County Council approve the delegated authority policy, and that staff be directed to provide a draft of a delegation of authority bylaw to committee and council for consideration. And there's quite a bit of background there for you to peruse. Number six, asset management and long-term financial plan. So there are three resolutions under this item, the first of which is Resolution number FACC 24-04-45, moved by the Chair, second by committee, that County Council coordinate a special meeting of County Council in May to discuss the financial impact to fund the asset management plan and long-term financial plan. Resolution FACC 24-04-46, oh, this resolution was tabled, my apologies, but it was moved by the Chair, second by committee, that County Council approve the asset management, and, sorry, guys, that's just background. And the other one was postponed, so it is there for your perusal. I don't know what I was thinking. Everybody's favorite topic, number seven, 2024 tax policy. And I actually do have two resolutions this time. Resolution number FACC 24-04-49, moved by the Chair, second by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw setting the starting tax, starting 2024 tax ratios for county purposes and the lower-tier purposes for the year 2024. And Resolution number FACC 24-04-50, moved by the Chair, second by committee, that County Council approve that the 2024 tax ratio bylaw include a revenue-neutral ratio for the landfill class at 1.189066. And there is background there of the 2020, 2024 Tax Policy Working Group, and the property classes, and lots more stuff that Mr. Burke included for your reading enjoyment. Number eight, 2024 County of Renfrew Tax Rate Bylaw. Resolution number FACC 24-01-5, 04-51, moved by Chair, second by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw to establish the 2024 tax rates for the County of Renfrew purposes. And again, there is background there, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members, Bros, Doncaster, Dunnehugh, Emo, Jardini, Yon, and Mayville. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Chair. Questions, comments, concerns on the information? Item one for members of council. Member from Abst. Bromley?
Excuse me, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to, and we did have a, an engaged conversation, discussion at Finance and Administration, and it does bear repeating. That's a substantial, excuse me, that's a substantial surplus right there. I think it's about 8.3 million on, I think, a levy of $54 million in 2024. But the other thing that bears addressing or speaking to in this instance as well, because of the unusual circumstances of the internal loan that's been assigned to the Algonquin Trail outfit, if you will, wherein the first charge against any surplus under the general line, which is the top line, goes to repay any improvements that have been drawn from reserves for the upgrade of the Algonquin Trail. So. upgrade of the Algonquin Trail. So Mr. Burke identified, and counsel, you can see that on page 365, if you want to turn to that, there is an additional 1.8 million, almost $1.9 million of surplus. You will see that in the line immediately above total expenses, highlighted in yellow. And you will see at the extreme right, there is a variance of 1.873 million. That was an additional surplus that has already been assigned to repayment of the Algonquin Trail. So it is worth noting that in fact, on a $54 million levy in 2023, there was a $10.1 million surplus. And once again, that may be more salient as we pursue, push further into the FNA report, or in fact, at our May special workshop meeting.
Thank you. And a member from Whitewater? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, okay, there's nobody. Item number two. Item three. Had a great conversation with Bev. She dropped in the other day when I was struggling with my printer, helped me with my printer, but we had a great conversation as she was doing it. So certainly she'll be missed. Very enthusiastic about the health of our employees when she was working with them. Item number four, Abbotson Bromley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very pleased at this. Commend Mr. Kelly for really pushing this. I think it is vitally important to recognize that, that staff at the County of Renfrew are what drives us forward in the county from the corporate perspective, but also from the geographical perspective. The people are our strength. Kind of borrowing on DeFasco's old slogan, strength is our product, the people is our strength. And in this instance, there's no question. So I'm very pleased and congratulations to all those who won the, the awards.
Thank you. Item number five, please. Item number six. Item seven. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly?
Sorry, just through you, Chair, through you, Warden. So item number six, we are, we are, in terms of dates, we're looking at the afternoon of May the 15th in your calendar. So that's FNA in the morning. And then subsequent to FNA, we would continue on with that special council meeting on that Thursday. So that's, that's the current date we're considering. And it should be through Gwen, I guess, or Connie will be a notice of, of that meeting coming out. So just wanted to be, make you aware of that date.
A member from Kildare.
Thank you, Chair. Did you say the 16th?
I did say the 16th. In my head, I said the 16th. My lips weren't moving at the same time. The 16th, sorry, the 16th.
A member from Greater Matawaska, Greater Waska.
Yeah. Just sorry for the timing for the 16th. Can you just repeat that? Because I have, I do have a council, regular council meeting at 3:00 PM that day.
Yeah. So we'll, we were saying the afternoon of the 16th, through you, Warden, sorry. We were saying the afternoon. However, just because we don't know how long FNA meeting is going to be in that morning, we were considering that you'd stay, come for lunch, and then we'd continue at 1:00.
Okay. So probably remotely then, for a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, to answer that question that I heard, yes, through you, Warden, obviously, it's a scheduling conflict. And attending virtually was part of your procedural bylaw, you'll be quote unquote allowed to do that.
Thank you. So item number seven, a member from Whitewater this time.
Yes, this time. Thanks, Warden. I just wanted to make the comment, the optional small-scale on-farm business subclass. I noted the discussion that was included in the, the package from a Whitewater perspective, and I imagine from other large municipalities with large agricultural economic drivers. This is a very interesting area that I believe I'd like to encourage that we continue to look forward into. I noticed that it does go and ask the, discuss with the Economic Development Division. I'm also wondering if it's worthwhile engaging our Agricultural Committee and dealing directly with some of the, the agricultural producers out there that might have a feel for more of this, how this on-farm business subclass might be an opportunity for, for growth. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Burke, is this your area of expertise?
Through you, Warden. Yeah, that, that's certainly something we can do through our economic development engagement is, is touch base with that committee as well. And we can certainly have that happen.
Thank you. Any further comments on item seven? Seeing none. Item number eight. Report as a whole? I'm sorry?
Can I go back to item number six? I was remiss. And sorry, Warden. So on the, on the long-term financial plan in that meeting, I was confused by the date for a second. I got my brain somewhere else. But what Mr. Burke and I have talked to, we've talked to the Chair of FNA, we've talked to the Warden, prior to that 16th, we're going to send out some documents. And Mr. Burke has done some great work so far on what we're going to send out in terms of wrapping this up. We're also going to suggest that we have a day, I think, or a couple hours, or some time in there. Should a member of council wish to engage, perhaps Mr. Burke and myself, on understanding it better, or coming in and having a chat with us to determine what's going to be in those reports would be much better. And perhaps we're now, I'll ask Mr. Burke to fill in my, my blanks. Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. And through you, Warden, to, to Mr. Kelly. So I guess what we've struggled with is that there's obviously an infinite combination of ways to pay for things and different variations on what work we would do or not do, different levels of service. So if council wants to see a specific model of something they have in their mind, it's a little bit onerous on us to try and do that in the middle of the council meeting. But if you let us know ahead of time, or would like to sit down with us and work through it, we're happy to do that. And I think that's what we're offering is some time for myself and Mr. Hanraff and Mr. Kelly to sit down and work through a model if there's something specific you wanted to see.
Okay, thank you. A member from Kildare, Haggerty Richards, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question in regards to the members that aren't part of the FNA committee. Is there a specific time that you would like them to appear? Or should they come for the entire day also? Just a question.
Mr. Kelly?
So this is going to be a special council meeting. So there shall be everybody that afternoon, not just FNA. So FNA will be in that morning. So are you speaking specifically to the special meeting? Are you speaking to, or to what Mr. Burke just suggested?
Basically, like, if you're not a member of FNA, is there a specific time to come to the asset?
Oh, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, sorry. We're just gonna set the time for 1:00 that afternoon.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking out loud that in case FNA is done, say, at 10:00, 30, 11 o'clock, that we could start the asset plan earlier. That's just in case.
Yeah. Through you, Warden. So the issue we have, of course, is public notice, right? So we have to give public notice to start a time. And if, if we are, for late, that's okay, conceivably. But then people get upset when we're late, right? So it's easier for us to set a time and stick to it.
Great, thank you. And a member, Abbotson Bromley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I think, and through you, perhaps to Mr. Kelly, I'm not sure. I know that Operations Committee, in the middle of this month, did also review the, the draft AMP slash LTFP. I don't know how many members outside of Operations and Finance that don't sit on either of those committees will not have seen even that first draft, which does disadvantage those folks. It's probably a small number. But I'm wondering if, if the, the draft that was provided in the middle of committee week, that be provided directly to any of those council members that don't sit on either of those committees and have never seen, there is a draft actually that FNA did not approve because we, the direction was in fact to go to the workshop. So if you have not seen the draft, you are going to be disadvantaged.
Through you, Warden. So the plan, I believe the plan right now is to, as part of the agenda, or quite a piece before that, we will submit to everyone that draft plan. We'll also submit the graph, the growth reserve policies that we have, and a few other documents that were presented at the FNA meeting. So, but in plenty of time, I think, now that this resolution may or may not be, well, if this resolution shall pass today, Mr. Burke and I will work on, on getting that out very soon. So you'll have at least two weeks, if not three, to, to review the documents.
A member, Abbotson Bromley, supplementary?
Thank you. And I believe that that would be sufficient because everybody else that's either on Operations or Finance and Admin now has seen it too. By the time the workshop comes around, we all have had that for a month. So I think it is incumbent upon those who do not sit on that, all of council, but certainly for the benefit of those that do not sit on either of those committees, the sooner the better. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, item number eight. Yeah. No further questions? The report as a whole? Seeing none. A mover, please?
Some moved, Warden.
Thank you. You've heard the report and the commentary. And with that, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you, counsel. And we'll move to Striking Committee Chair, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Striking Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Going directly to bylaws. Item number one is Community Drug Strategy Steering Committee Representative. Resolution number ST-CC-24-04-04, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve that Counselor Angie Ardini and Counselor Michael Donahue represent the County of Renfrew on the Renfrew County and District Community Drug Strategy Steering Committee. And further, that bylaw number 1-24 be repealed and a revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year, or until their successors are appointed, be adopted. And as this was just provided earlier today by Ms. Dobrowski, the background is that the Renfrew County and District Community Drug Strategy consists of leaders, this is the, I think that Dr. Morganstern, Dr. Jason Morganstern, the Medical Officer of Health with Renfrew County and District Health Unit, has initiated this process and has drawn in largely the community. And it is Dr. Morganstern's belief, and I, I share that belief, that there's a substantial value being provided by having the, the County of Renfrew represented through elected representatives. This is a Pan-Renfrew County initiative to the County of Renfrew, I think is one of the few agencies outside of the Health Unit, and the school boards that is Pan-County. Item number two, Mr. Chair, is the Recreation Trails Advisory Committee, Resolution number ST-CC-24-04-05, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that the Striking Committee recommend that County Council approve that the Recreational Trails Advisory Committee now fall under the responsibility of the Operations Committee, and that bylaw number 1-24 be repealed and a revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year, or until their successors are appointed, be adopted at the next meeting of County Council. The background is here, this has been a, somewhat of a legacy issue. We have been transitioning trails. I think this came out of the Strategy Corp. Recommendations, which was a service delivery improvement plan of, I'm going to say, 2022, though my memory is beginning to fade. So it has been a, an appropriate transition that we, we continue to, to advance the, the purchase and development of the Algonquin Trail. But this is to finally close that up outside, as I understand it from our meeting this morning of the Striking Committee, that I think that the purchase is going to continue to be embedded within the development and property. And it shall be the, the maintenance and, and upgrade to the Algonquin Trail that is being transitioned. With that, Mr. Chair, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with committee members, Bros, Emo, Grills, Jan, McKenzie, and Nicholson.
Thank you, Chair. And comments, questions, concerns on item number one from council? Item number two, the report as a whole? Can I have a mover, please?
Some moved.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll be looking for a mover and a seconder. That council move into a closed session? Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. That the bylaws attached here to the document and listed below be adopted as presented. So a mover, please? And they're deemed read three times. A member from Armpryor and the member from Brugnell and Doc Ragland. You've heard the motion, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So we will be going to a closed meeting, but it will be at the end of, at the end of this meeting. It's, we had to shift the agenda around a little bit. My apologies. He's such a creature of habit. So we'll make him feel much better. The Association of Municipalities of Ontario, there's no report. The Eastern Ontario Regional Network, there is no report. Federation of Canadian Municipalities is attached. And the member from Deep River, please.
Are you sure? Thank you, Warden. Yeah, so I won't, I won't read through all this, but I did summarize, or give an overview of, a summary of the, the meetings that were held in March. I'm just going to point out just one significant thing that I added on at the end, as the federal budget was tabled on April 16th, my birthday, by the way. And, and FCM has, has, we certainly had some, some response initially, and then a more greater in-depth response to the budget. And relatively pleased, what you will see in there without a whole lot of details, are many of the items and funding envelopes that will support a whole lot of the, the advocacy that FCM's been doing directly with the federal government, which is good to see. Is it enough? Probably not. But when, when will it ever be enough for all the infrastructure and, and things, infrastructure projects and, and the deficit that, that all of us know that we have? Just to highlight, there is some significant money being announced for, two things. One, water, wastewater projects that we had before, but they've actually put the word management in there. So some of the conversations we've had in this room stemming from Whitewater region, entering in while FCM is still working through some of the material that we've been providing to them on operating funds for small water and wastewater systems. FCM has been advocating for, for that in advance of, of the next round of committee meetings, where I'm assuming we will adopt that by policy. But, so that word, water and wastewater management is included in there. And secondly, the, the increase, there's, there's a bunch of money there that's available for housing and for the supporting infrastructure to go along with housing, which we've been talking about. But it's just the money. So how that money, so now the work that we're starting on is trying to convince trying to convince, um, the federal government on what type of programs to flow this money through. And as you know, for a very long time, we've been advocating, uh, for the same, uh, type of, um, program that the Canada Community Building Fund is built on, um, which, which would mean, if, if we're successful in that, that the money would flow directly from the federal government to the municipalities. Um, and where, where the province comes into play on that, uh, we're not sure yet, uh, but those are the details we're going to work out. The one significant thing that, uh, we continue to work on that, um, either, either the federal government ducked or they just weren't going there, was the, uh, the significant push that we've been making on, uh, a new, uh, municipal fiscal framework. So giving us different tools, um, to allow us to, uh, different tools for, uh, funding and the way we do stuff. Um, and I, I don't know the date, but it's like, the, the framework we have now is from the eighteen hundreds. So, I mean, it needs to be updated. Um, so we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you. And, and one of the most significant, um, gems in the budget, uh, was the increase of the tax credit for volunteer firefighters, uh, for small rural municipalities. It's, uh, I believe it's, it's doubled from $3,000 to $6,000 was my memory of the, of the budget. So, you know, again, uh, you know, that was something that was lobbied about, and so thank you for that and all your other efforts.
Direct advocacy on the, on that item itself. Well, I mean, all of them are, but, uh, that one was fairly significant. We were asking for 10K at the time, but, uh, they went halfway, so, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, you know, and you can let, uh, FCM know that the number of reads they get on their documents, at least half of them in Ontario are mine. So thank you. Uh, member from Abbotson Bromley, please.
Uh, thank you much, Mr. Warden. Thank you through you to councillor Doncaster for the update. Very intrigued, uh, in the, um, the comment regarding the negotiations over the CCBF. Uh, certainly is, um, kind of summary, uh, comment on that of going to directly to the municipalities. I certainly understand the impetus perhaps behind that, but that is going to be a challenge. I think we're seeing that with the, uh, housing, um, federal involvement. Uh, and it seems so far to have yielded a little bit of acrimony between the provinces and the federal government. Uh, my question on the CCBF, though, is, is, um, much more specific with respect to, I know that, that there has been some advocacy, I haven't heard it in a while, but twice in the time that I've been, uh, mayor and county councillor, uh, the federal government has doubled the, uh, CCBF. Twice, correct. And there has been certainly some, um, advocacy on making that permanent. Is that an ongoing part of the discussion between FCM and the federal government of recognizing the incredibly inequitable allocation of, of, I, the last I saw, I think that municipalities were getting nine cents out of every tax dollar, and I think we were responsible for something like sixty-two percent of infrastructure. Uh, so is that a continuing, uh, advocacy by FCM with respect to the CCBF?
So in short, yes. Um, the, the doubling of the CCBF, uh, not to mention, uh, it being indexed, and I forget the exact rate annually. There's a small one now. We've asked for that to be larger. Uh, just to be clear, there is no CCBF program in effect today. That, that agreement has expired. Um, so that's, that's, the work is, is, uh, renegotiating, uh, that program, uh, which, which is underway. And, uh, I think the leverage now will be to, to renew that program and then take some of the infrastructure funding that was just announced in the budget that will allow the federal government to double that program and, and flow the money that way. So that, that's how, how we're going at it for sure.
Sub补补
Just on that, I guess, two components. First, so because there is not a direct relationship between the federal government and municipalities, in Ontario, the CPBF, CCBF is administered through AMO that receives the federal funding and then it allocates them based on their formula. So I'm presuming that there's a similar regime would exist across the country as to how this is done. Uh, councillor Doncaster is indicating no. But in this instance, then, as AMO is the distribution agent for this, I'm presuming that they are deferring to FCM in the advocacy of what's going, particularly given that the agreement has, has come to an end. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. Um, in, Ontario's not unique, but, uh, for the CCBF to flow through AMO, um, is of great benefit to Ontario municipalities. That doesn't happen across the country. A lot of it is, is, flows through the province. Uh, and there's been some significant challenges with that. Um, the province doesn't always flow that money directly to, to the municipalities, or, or they add a whole bunch of, of red tape and strings to it, which makes it very difficult. So, uh, in short, we're lucky in Ontario that, that AMO has stepped up and, uh, come up with this agreement to administer these funds. Um, and, and yes, there's, there's always conversations between AMO staff and, and FCM staff, um, as, I mean, FCM's audible, uh, FCM's offices are in Ottawa, so, um, they're constantly speaking and, and working together, for sure.
As a follow-up, Mr. Warden, it does seem, uh, confronts me with a conundrum that the, where it's administered by the provinces and flowing through provinces, they would be adding conditions and strings attached because the provinces seem disinclined to have strings attached when the federal government is providing money through the provinces. So it seems an odd, uh, sort of dynamic that is inhabited there, damned if you do, damned if you don't. The, the final, uh, component to this, probably more of a comment, Mr. Warden, I'm a little bit concerned that I, I, and I'm, recognize the enormity of the contributions that the federal government is prepared to make, particularly as it pertains to housing and the infrastructure requiring, required for the enormity of that challenge. So my concern is on the CCBF. If that's gonna be targeted, uh, to those areas that are, are going to have quotas for growth, because where the doubling is needed is in the existing infrastructure and just maintaining that existing infrastructure. I'm fairly certain that there are lots of my colleagues in the room, uh, are recognizing the challenge on the status quo infrastructure that we have. So my concern is that it may be doubled up, but some of us may have our win, our noses pressed up against the window, uh, when the new funding formula maybe, uh, may be delivered.
So, um, no comment on your first statement? Uh, yeah. Uh, on the second one, um, I would almost say that you were sitting in the committee of the whole room, um, in March, uh, because those are the, those are the exact conversations that we were having. So, um, FCM's negotiating that stuff. Everything that FCM does, um, we have a rural lens policy that, that, that gets applied to any advocacy that we do towards the federal government, um, and ensures that, that rural Ontario, uh, or rural Canada, for that matter, uh, is getting their fair share of, of that stuff and that we're not, uh, you know, standing on the, on the crest of the hill waving our arms kind of thing as, you know, the train to Toronto goes by us. So, uh, yeah, we're working on it. Uh, um, noted, and, and we are having those exact conversations.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to notice of motions. Seeing none. And, uh, members' written motions? Okay, seeing none. And then new business. What I'd like to suggest, or Mr. Kelly would like to suggest? I'd like to suggest, uh, a motion, uh, from the floor and a seconder, that we suspend the rules and allow a presentation from Director Patrick on the National Housing Strategy Funding Allocation. The information came to us, uh, quite late. A member from, uh, Greater Madawaska, seconded by a member from Bonshire Valley. And discussion? Okay, member Abbotson Bromley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to confirm, so the rules are being suspended in order to receive the report that was not part of our agenda. Is that correct?
End here motion, yes.
Pardon me?
End here a motion to support.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My apologies. Uh, so all those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. And Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, Warden. And through you to council. Good afternoon, members of council. Um, my report, uh, which was circulated by email and, and is in front of you for those members that are in the council chambers, uh, is one item, and it's a resolution regarding the National Housing Strategy Funding Allocation. Would you like me to go ahead and read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
Okay, it's quite lengthy. So the recommendation is that county council support a resolution initiated by the Housing Services Corporation's Strategic Steering Committee on the National Housing Affordability Crisis as follows. Whereas there is an unprecedented national housing affordability crisis nationally, whereas there is no for-profit supply-only trickle-down solution to ending the national housing affordability crisis, whereas substantial investments in ensuring the use of housing for homes are required to help end the national housing affordability crisis, whereas substantial investments in new affordable social housing are required to help end the national housing affordability crisis, whereas substantial investments in revitalizing existing affordable social housing are required to help end the national housing affordability crisis, whereas substantial investments in social support expansions are required to prevent families choosing between housing and other basic necessities of life to help end the national housing affordability crisis, whereas the national housing affordability crisis is most acute in Ontario, whereas unlike most provinces and territories in Canada, forty-seven service managers and district social services administration boards, SMs and DSabs, are responsible for delivering social supports, including housing affordability supports in Ontario. Whereas many of these forty-seven SM and DSabs in Ontario are larger than many provinces and territories in the country, whereas these forty-seven service managers and DSabs in Ontario lack the revenue and policy tools and powers of the provincial and federal governments to end the housing affordability crisis. Whereas any funding reductions in funding from the federal and provincial governments risks the termination of critically needed housing and social supports for some of the most vulnerable across Ontario. Be it resolved that the warden advocate to the federal and provincial governments that the funding dispute must be resolved to limit mounting harms to some of Ontario's most vulnerable families. Be it resolved that the warden send urgent correspondence to the provincial and federal ministers of housing to confirm that financial support will continue for vulnerable households across Ontario currently in receipt of the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit prior to May thirty-first, 2024. Be it resolved that the warden advocate to the federal and provincial governments to continue to fund service managers and DSabs an amount equivalent to the monies under the CMHC Ontario bilateral agreement in the National Housing Strategy until a new funding agreement can be reached. Be it resolved that the warden advocate to the federal and provincial governments to establish a trilateral table, including the service managers and DSabs to negotiate the final three-year tranche of funding under the National Housing Strategy.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, please? Member from Madawaska Valley and the member from Townville, Laurentian Hills. Now discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, background. My apologies. I thought the motion was everything.
Thank you, Warden. And through you to council. So to highlight some of the background, I know, uh, there's some detailed information in front of you, and, um, some of this has been brought forward, um, already to council and, and to the Renfrew County Housing Board. So I'll, I'll keep my remarks brief, but happy to answer any questions. Uh, so in terms of the background, um, you know, council is aware that in 2017, the federal government announced Canada's ten-year National Housing Strategy, and then in 2018, as part of that, the federal and Ontario government signed the bilateral agreement under that that set out three cost-matched initiatives. And that is, um, the, as we call it, COCHI, the Canada-Ontario Community Housing Initiative, the OPI, which is the Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative. Those two funds are used by service managers to fund both new and, uh, new builds as, and building projects as well as, uh, repairs to existing stock. And that is both for, um, service managers themselves as well, as well as for, uh, local nonprofit housing corporations that they support. And also the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit being the third source, uh, which is the COB benefit. And this is a rent supplement benefit that is administered. It gives, um, a rent allowance, a monthly supplement to help with the affordability of rent. It is determined by service managers and that administered provincially. So on the, um, twenty-fifth of March, um, we receive, all service managers received a letter which indicated that funding, um, through the, the three cost marriage, cost, uh, sorry, cost-shared initiatives may be, um, suspended or, uh, funding may be canceled or reduced, um, if there was not a, a new agreement that was reached between the provincial and federal government. Um, CAO Kelly did speak to all of council about this on the twenty-seventh of March and, and verbally reported that we had received this and, and the letter as well was brought to the Renfrew County Housing Corporation Board at the, um, April meeting. We recently received, um, a circulation, a resolution that was initiated through the Housing Services Corporation Strategic Steering Committee with, um, a, a request that all local councils across Ontario, um, consider supporting the resolution in order to advocate for, um, no reductions to any of the funding to, um, around the areas that are funding affordable housing stock and new builds, both for lo, local service managers as well as for no, local nonprofit housing providers. So I can report to this council that in, uh, the County of Renfrew, that we, uh, the funds that have been paused are, um, the COCHI fund, which we were expecting nine-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred dollars, the OPI fund, um, in the amount of five-hundred-thousand-three-hundred dollars. And those would be, again, uh, projects that Mr. Davis's team would be undertaking. Those projects have been placed on hold. They are also for projects that the low, five local nonprofit housing providers have, um, planned and, and also are on hold at this time pending, uh, some decisions about the funding. With respect to the COB rent allowance program, there are three-hundred-and-twelve recipients in Renfrew County that do receive that rent allowance program. Um, at this time, they're, those, um, they did receive their April, um, payments. Um, however, we are told that their rent allowance program may be ceased as of June, which is the, at the time that the new, um, reports are ran by the province and, and new eligibility is determined for the next year's, uh, rent allowance program. I'll stop there, Warden, but happy to answer any questions.
Sorry, member from Bonshire Valley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Not a question, just a comment. The irony should not be lost on any of us, that we've sat in these chambers, we've talked about housing as a crisis situation, and now this is the result of advocacy and talking and talking and talking and finding out-of-the-box solutions. Right here in the County of Renfrew, you have no idea how upsetting this is to actually, I'm gonna leave my, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Member from the Townville Laurentian Hills, please.
Actually, I think I do realize how upsetting this is to everybody, because I'm sure everybody in this room feels it. Um, I think this resolution is absolutely necessary, and to think that, uh, funding is cut means anything. We need more funding all the time. I think this is very time-sensitive and, and absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Member Abbotson Bromley?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I'm, I'm just scrolling as quickly as I can through some of the supporting information. There is the letter dated March twenty-fifth from Minister Calandra, but then there is a, uh, a brief Calandra, but then there is a brief, I'm not sure, the Housing Strategic Steering Committee, I'm not sure who sits on that committee, but there does seem to be, and first off, I'll back up a little bit. I want to preface this. Of course, we are in a crisis, so there is little time for getting into a fistfight over this, but this does seem to be painting a substantial legitimate difference between the federal government and the provincial government in how we're counting things. I'm speaking here towards the briefing note as opposed to the letter from Minister Calandra. So, do we have any sense of that? It does not surprise me entirely that Minister Calandra's letter doesn't spill much ink in relation to that. Do we have any independent analysis of what these agreements are, that the federal government is suggesting that the provincial government is now throwing a whole lot into this agreement that didn't belong in that agreement? So, I do want to be careful. Absolutely, we need to not be distracted in the housing crunch that we find ourselves, but, and I'm assuming that that would be a large part of a trilateral discussion and agreement, because there does seem to be some legitimate differences as to how each of the senior levels of government are approaching the agreement that has been in place heretofore. I wonder if any light could be shed on that.
Thank you. Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, Warden. And through you to Council Donahue and the rest of council. What I can share is that one of the, I think, one of the provincial concerns that's being expressed is around the significant pressure to maintain the existing units for service managers. Locally, we do not, you know, measure any of the targets. However, there are very strict guidelines as to what can be funded through the COCHE and the OPE funding sources. And so internally, of course, as all of council is aware, there's an overwhelming number of projects that need to be determined, so we utilize the funding looking at what is eligible to fund it for and put those monies towards necessary projects that may be for repairs or new projects, but we do not, we do not monitor any of the measurement tools. We just follow the province's guidelines around what the funding can be used for locally. Hope that helps.
Supplementary?
It does help, and certainly that goes to the crux of the disagreement. The province is advocating on the current stock that's in place and what the enormity of the costs are of maintaining and, in fact, rehabilitating. The number that they're using in here is, I think, by 19, or sorry, by 2030, we might have 30% of our stock basically unfit. At the same time, the federal government is saying, you're on target to meet 6% of your requirement for new build, and that's a pretty small number, and saying, and essentially in the briefing note, it is saying, the federal government is saying, we don't think you're likely going to make up that 94% in this one calendar year. So, it seems that this can't have possibly just confronted the federal and provincial governments this year, that perhaps the formula is not responding to the needs, i.e. of the new build versus retrofit, renovation, et cetera. So, I have to suggest that the first place that I find myself is to be utterly disappointed at the 11th hour. There still seems to be this substantial disagreement on how we're viewing what they are calling the agreement, I guess, through Canada Mortgage and Housing. That seems like it should be very straightforward. You're meeting it or you're not meeting it, and if the issue was that it skewed too much towards new development, it seems that should have been a conversation that we might have been engaged in like two or three or five years ago, as opposed to when the bank teller may be putting up the closed sign. So, in any event, it is a frustration for me, but I recognize the challenge that confronts us today. As the service managers, this is where the service is delivered, and the bankers can't agree on this, and I find that appalling at the 11th hour.
Okay, thank you. Any further, sorry, the member from Deep River?
Yeah, thank you, Warden. So, I agree with a lot of the comments that my colleague beside me here has just said. One of the things that has been bubbling in the waters for quite some time now, that has come through FCM to, from MPs and the Prime Minister himself, is the fact that the federal government has transferred through provincial transfer payments that include housing, social housing and healthcare, just to include everything, significant funds that the province has. The province hasn't spent them. So, I suspect that this is partly a way of the federal government to put pressure on the province to step up to the plate and move forward on some of the things that we're committed to in a number of different agreements. So, I think this will work out, but I don't think that, I think it's a good idea for us to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Member from Whitewater and then North Agona Wilberforce.
Thanks, Warden. I'll just add to the conversation, and I can appreciate the political disagreements at the federal and provincial levels, but we're basically using the people who live in these houses as pawns while two levels of the government disagree on their funding. And essentially, what we've decided, and I support the resolution, but what we're deciding here is to stop funding or stop spending $1.5 million that we know isn't enough, but we are agreeing to not spend it on the houses that need it right now, where there's people living in them or waiting to live in them, and we're essentially going to cease, we're talking about ceasing rent subsidies for 312 families in the county of Renfrew. And we're doing this not because the money's not there, but because two levels of government can't decide on how best to fund it amongst all of their other priorities. And I would put it back to us as a group, are we willing to really stop these projects? We've talked and talked about how important housing is. We just talked about a surplus. Maybe the resolution should include an amendment to say, we are going to continue to spend the money we must spend, and we expect the province to step in and after they've sorted this out, reimburse us. Otherwise, we're basically agreeing to put on hold. I mean, I don't know whether a million and a half dollars worth of projects can be re-initiated once an agreement is found. Will they be deferred till next year? That's my rant. Thanks, Warden.
Thank you. Quite restrained, and I can add to that by we did, we have pressed on a number of occasions suggesting that we're going to lose this construction season, and as the year rolls on, by the time they get the deal done and get the announcement out and roll out the funding, you know, we're looking at next year likely. So, we have mentioned that, that, you know, these things need to be resolved last year or prior to February 1st. So, with that, member from North Agona Wilberforce, please.
Thank you, Warden, and my colleague from Whitewater stole some of my exact comments about these most vulnerable people being used as pawns. Just to add to that, like, what happens to these 312 families after the end of, end of May, who won't be getting that rent subsidy? Are they going to end up in the street, which then puts them in a, you know, housing challenge or crisis? Which does that put them on the street? Does that bring them to our mental health units and our hospital emergency rooms and creates much more of a strain on provincial dollars than getting an agreement on this funding would easily resolve? Thank you.
Thank you. I suspect we'll be revisiting this again. And so with that, the member from Greater Madawaska and then from Petawawa, please.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Just, I'm going to keep it short, because Counselor Nicholson, Counselor Bros, everybody's same line. I'm just disheartened that this is taking place when we have an advanced immigration policy and we're bringing people into this country at a rate per populace that is higher than when Sir Wilfrid Laurier was Prime Minister. We're currently at probably one of the most aggressive populists to percentage of immigration right now, and it's very disheartening that it's, that two levels of government are arguing about this and they're using people as pawns. So, that's my two cents' worth.
Thank you. Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, and I'll just continue on what my colleague from Whitewater said, that I can't myself in good conscience agree to this funding being paused or stopped in any way and go to bed and try and, go home, try and sleep at night, knowing that 312 families are no longer able to afford rent, and $1.4 million of projects that we have planned are not going to be completed, which might further exasperate some of the housing issues we have in Renfrew County. So, I think we need to find a way, whether it's using reserves or finding money from somewhere else to continue these projects, continue those rent supplements, and then say to the province, or through the province to the federal government, say to them that we continued with these programs, we continued with these projects, because in good conscience, we could not stop them, and now you have to make us whole. You have to come clean and find us that money.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? With that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you, council, for your patience and allowing us to bring this in. Any other new business? Counselor from Killu, Hargie, Richards.
Thank you, Chair. As I mentioned earlier about our environmental action tour on May 4th, which is a highlight in our community, I do have some other news. One of our, a couple of our citizens came forward with a concern in regards to the overdose problem. We had four recorded cases in our community, and two eventually passed away, and that was in one day. I may have been really naive to think, small town, rural town, it would never happen in our town, you know? There was walls built. It would never creep into our town. Well, it's creeped, and it's a really sad situation. And so, my message is, don't be naive that it can't happen in your town. We've scheduled a meeting with the OPP, and I'm not sure what they can do as far as foot patrols or that type of thing, but get ready, it's coming to every community. I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. And in fairness to the OPP, in concentrated areas like Petawawa or Nauripara or Renfrew or Pembroke, you know, they can do, they can do foot patrols, and they are doing foot patrols in combination with our Mesa team. So, you know, that's been highly effective. In the rural areas, that's much more difficult, because you don't want to do foot patrol down Concession 10, and I'm not being sarcastic, it's just, it's difficult to do. So, you know, hopefully, the committee that was struck by Dr. Morganstern, Medical Officer of Health, will offer up some strategies, and I think as Mesa rolls out, there'll be some, likely some new strategies, some engagement as well. So, can't promise that we have every answer, because every individual person that is encountered by the Mesa team is somewhat different. They're not the same. They're not cookie cutter, but I'm hopeful there'll be more, there'll be more strategies emerging that'll be of more assistance to your community.
So, the member from Adamston Bromley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I'm actually enormously pleased to take advantage of the new business. I suspect that most of the people in the room may be very much aware that there was a U.S. female collegiate basketball player that seems to have changed the dynamic in collegiate athletics in the United States and is now set to have a dramatic impact on professional women's basketball in the United States. I just saw this week where the New Jersey team that drafted Caitlin Clark, their jerseys are now outselling those of the Dallas Cowboys, and I think this is long overdue, and I'm thrilled to actually hear that. The reason I'm actually bringing that forward, it's from the perspective of you need to see it to be it. I wanted to also bring forward, because I have, I do not believe that it has had sufficient notice in our community. Very proud of a young woman from Adamston Bromley, Kinley Rice, daughter of Eric Rice and Michael Rice, who farm, not too far from my farm, and their daughter is now a two-time, along with her Carleton University Ravens teammates, a returning champion, national university champion basketball player, and I think it is incredibly important to celebrate this. And I know that even within my community, there's a young woman that is on the Ottawa, sorry, just bear with me for a moment, Ottawa, sorry, the River Dogs Women's Basketball, which is local women's basketball. So, I think that when we have these role models, this young woman grew up on a farm that is my neighbor, but you can be a national champion in this or anything, and I think it is incredibly important for us to celebrate this achievement. And as I said, I don't think that this is commonly known, and I think it has been under-reported in our community, to celebrate along with Kinley Rice this two-time national championship. So, I wish to put that forward.
Thank you very much. We are trying to make a greater effort to recognize successes in our community, and we, you know, after the meeting, we can sit down and have a conversation. There might be something we can arrange. Thank you. And the member from Deep River?
Thank you. Just briefly, under new business, I just would like to inform county council that upcoming Olympics and Paralympics that will be held in Paris, France, or in France, there is a, an athlete from Deep River that will be competing in the Paralympics in archery, and he happens to go by the name of Kyle Trombley. So, his first round is on August 30th, and then we'll see where he goes from there. He certainly qualified for the medal rounds in the Pan Am Games, so there's a very good chance that he'll go through the elimination rounds, and I'm happy to say that I'm going to be there cheering him on also.
Good for you. Unfortunately, I won't be, because my travel budget, I've gone through my 5,000 kilometers already. But no, congratulations, that's great news. And the member from Nauripara, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a reminder that the Renfrew County Senior Games are on in the month of May, so you might want to either participate or go view the old timers.
So, thank you. If there's nothing else, what I'll do is, I'm going to announce that the 17th Annual Wardens Golf Tournament will be on Friday, June the 7th, at Dragonfly Golf Links in Renfrew. It's 11:00 a.m. shotgun start with a ramble format, $400 for a team of four or $100 per person, and of course, that includes your green fees, your lunch, your cart, swag bag, and there are after-game appetizers and door prizes. This year, the proceeds will go to the Renfrew County, or sorry, the County of Renfrew Housing and Homelessness Fund and Autism Ontario East Region. And so you can speak to Mr. Bellmore for registration here at the county building. So, thank you very much. Yep. Okay, and now, we'll, would you like a break? Okay. With that, we'll take a break and come back at 3 o'clock, please.
Thank you, everyone. If I can get a mover in a second or please be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Transitional housing (in brackets) and a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board (in brackets) former CN rail line assumption. Mover please. Member from North Agona Wilbefor, seconded by Town of Laurentian Hills. Discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, very quickly, Town of Petawawa has some tiny new business.
Very tiny, very brief. I just got an email indicating, well, thank you Chair, and through you, I just got an email indicating the official reopening of the Troy Cinema on the Garrison Petawawa by a company called film.ca out of Oakville. I guess they have several theaters down there in Oakville. The CEO, Jeff Knoll, was visiting his son, who was stationed at Petawawa and saw the theater was closed and thought he would reopen it. They're upgrading all of the seating, there will be enhanced food and beverage offerings, and a new Dolby digital sound system, and they'll be open seven days a week with Hollywood movies. So good news for the county because right now you gotta go all the way to Renfrew, I believe, right, to see a movie?
Yes, all the way.
All the way.
All the way. That's quite a trip. Thank you. That is great news. Congratulations.
There is a drive-in to the Laurentian Valley?
Well, there is a drive-in to the Laurentian Valley.
Very clear.
And a mover and second for bylaw 7524, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held April 24, 2024, be now numbered, deemed read three times and passed. Mover, Abbot St. Bromley, second, Laurentian Valley. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. And the County Council now adjourned, moved by Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by Councillor Wilmer. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much, Council. It's been a great day.